This is Director Hampson. I'm now calling the February 24, 2021, regular board meeting to order at 3:31 PM. This meeting is being recorded. We would like to acknowledge that we are on the ancestral lands and traditional territories of the Puget Sound Coast Salish people. Ms. Wilson Jones, the roll call, please.
Director DeWolfe?
President.
Director Harris?
Right.
Director Hersi? Director Hersi? I can see that you're on the line, so I'll come back around to you, Director Hersi. Director Rankin?
Here.
Director Rivera Smith?
President.
And I see Director Hersi. Do you have the?
I, can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Okay.
And Director Hampson?
Here.
Okay, as we begin this meeting, I would also like to welcome Batel Tadessa, who will be joining us as the student representative from West Seattle High School. We will be hearing from Batel later in the meeting as well as fellow West Seattle High School student, Nikhil Chagun, who will be leading off our testimony list. This meeting is being held remotely, consistent with the Governor's proclamation on open public meetings. The public is being provided remote access today by phone and through SPS TV by broadcast and streaming on YouTube. To facilitate this meeting, I will ask all participants to ensure you are muted when you are not speaking. Staff may be meeting participants to address feedback and ensure we can hear directors and staff. I will now turn it over to Superintendent Juno for her comments.
Thank you, President Hampson. Yes, thank you, President Hampson, and good afternoon, directors. As you know, soon, it's almost been a year since we abruptly shut our doors and had the shift to remote learning way back on March 11th of last year. And we all recognize that it has been frustrating on all fronts, and we also know that we've learned a lot. We continue to put together information for our families and partners so that they understand what's going on. We can always do better, and we remain committed to learn and improve. I'm going to give just a few minutes today to provide a top 10 list of things our families need to know about returning to buildings for in-person learning. We shared this information with some of our community partners, and we'll build some other communication around this as well as we continue to develop more communication strategies for our families so they have an understanding of what this return to school, return to buildings really is. So, next slide. Throughout this pandemic response, our students have always come first. We remain committed to doing whatever it takes to ensure that every student thrives in any learning environment. This means that we've worked hard to improve remote learning. We made sure every student had the technology resources they needed. We trained up our educators in new ways of teaching and have continued to focus on social emotional support. And yet, we also know that there are still students who are struggling, and we continue to hear from families and students daily. We remain concerned about students identified for special education services and our younger students, and we'll continue in alignment with our strategic plan to prioritize students further from educational justice and those who are most vulnerable in our reopening plans and decisions. And while remote learning isn't optimal for most students, no matter the age, some students are struggling more than others. Last June, you'll remember that over 100 stakeholders, including parents, partners, school leaders, and educators, came together to provide direction in developing our return to in-person plans. Many of the values listed on this slide reflect those conversations. There was also recognition at that time that depending on transmission rates, availability of vaccines, and other factors, a return to in-person learning might need to be phased and done in small groups. Next slide. On December 17th, the board directed staff in alignment with the Department of Health Guidance to implement plans for bringing back some of our most vulnerable students. That those are students enrolled in special education intensive pathways and pre-K 1 students beginning on March 1st. And staff are prioritizing that phased return of students in special education intensive surveys pathways, first followed by students in pre-K through first grade. This does not mean that they are the only students that may return this spring, but it's a starting point. Next slide. The health and safety of our students and families have been our priority since day one. And like our neighboring districts, our preparation and implemented protocols meet the strict requirements of the CDC and public health. These protocols have been implemented in our 46 schools, already have students in their buildings receiving in-person learning in support of their special education IEP. And thanks to our partners, we've also had critical childcare services in our buildings since last spring. And we're operating AA Technology Resource Centers and 40 meal sites, who are serving now an average of 30,000 meals a day. Over 80 of our buildings are using these protocols, including daily health screenings, contact tracing, and coordinated communication. And while we have had some COVID cases, transmission has been mitigated and contained. I am confident in our staff's abilities to increase in-person learning and to serve more students. So I'm going to walk through a few of the steps that families and students will take during an in-person learning day. This is our top 10 list that we put together, and it provides information about what's been planned and put into place. So, next slide. Before entering a school building, parents and staff will submit a daily required health screening. This screening will be sent to families electronically, and they'll be able to access it via home language through email or text. The screening needs to be submitted by 7:00 AM every school day. Families will receive an approved or not-approved notice. If families have not completed the health screening before arriving at school, they can also do that at the school site. If a child arrives with a not-approved notice, they will be guided to a supervised waiting room, and staff will contact the family. The only students with an approved notice will enter classrooms. All students and staff must wear a cloth face covering or a mask or another approved alternative. Some staff, because of proximity to students, will be required to wear a higher level of PPE, including a face shield. Masks must be worn on the bus and while at school, except for when students are eating and drinking. If a child does not have a mask, we will provide one. Staff have also installed plexiglass barriers in the front office and in specialized rooms that may serve students because of disability, and they can't wear a mask. So, all mask protocols align with CDC and public health requirements. There will be fewer students on our yellow buses to support physical distancing. Students will maintain six feet while waiting for the bus and wear a mask on the bus. If a student does not have a face covering, one will be provided for them. Seats will be assigned, and routes have been designed to ensure little interaction between households. One student will be assigned to each school bus, each bus seat, unless they're from the same household. Windows will open or be adjusted to provide airflow, and students will exit the bus at the direction of the bus driver from front to back while maintaining six feet of physical distance. Bus drivers will wear approved PPE in compliance with labor and industry, such as a mask and sanitize high-touch areas between each route. Next slide, please. Once students arrive at school, they will be met by staff at designated drop-off areas where the daily health screening will be confirmed. If parents are dropping students off or students have arrived at school on their own, they will wait at the designated area, remaining six feet apart until a staff person welcomes that student into the building. All classrooms will be 15 students or less. These small groups or cohorts will stay together all day, including at lunch and recess. And once a student is approved for entry, they will enter through their designated cohort entrance. Student cohorts have separate entrances, exits, and restrooms in order to reduce interaction between those groups of students. All of our preschool, kindergarten, first grade, and intensive service pathway classrooms have been redesigned to support health and safety. In the classroom, students will be assigned to seats that are six feet apart in all directions and face the same direction. 10 feet has been left in the front of the classroom for the teacher. Arts and physical education will be provided through a combination of remote and asynchronous learning. Students with IEPs will receive general education content remotely with support from their teacher, and students will eat lunch in their classroom. Next slide, please. Students will have their own materials for daily use, and items will not be shared. Items coming back and forth from school to home will be limited. Hand washing will be prioritized throughout the day, including, but not limited to, on arrival, before lunch, after recess, and after using the restroom. All classrooms have been stocked with hand washing supplies, and hand washing signage is posted in classrooms. Daily cleaning of common areas is done in compliance with CDC and public health recommendations. High-touch areas, such as doorknobs, hinges, door bars, as well as restrooms, will be cleaned three times a day. We've hired additional staff to support this increase in cleaning, and additional PPE will be provided in every classroom for daily use. Next slide, please. Classroom entrance and release times will be staggered, and when heading home, students will line up maintaining a six-foot distance and walk to the designated loading zone and will be directed by staff as they load onto the bus. Students being picked up by a parent will maintain a six-foot social distance and walk to the designated pickup area. Any student not picked up will be escorted to a supervised gathering area to wait for parent's arrival. Seattle Public School staff have been prepared, preparing for a phased return to in-person learning since last June. Health and safety protocols have been implemented. We have audited all HVAC systems, and I know you'll all be receiving an update on that. And we've brought schools into compliance with CDC and expert recommendations. PPE is in place, and the district is prepared for student transportation and meals. And so while school will look different, we are committed to sustaining engaging and joyful learning classrooms. Next slide, please. The district's current proposal for pre-K through 12th grade students enrolled in special education intensive service pathways includes four full days of instruction, Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, and Friday. And the proposal for pre-K 1 includes two days of in-person instruction, so an AAB-BB model. Once the board approved or provided the December 17th directive, we started bargaining with the Seattle Education Association. SCA represents our teachers, our instructional assistants, and our classified staff. Our MOU agreed to, in August, required any increase of in-person instruction beyond services outlined in a student's IEP needed to be bargained. And so we've been bargaining with SCA every Tuesday and Thursday since early January. Yesterday, all of you know that we announced to staff and families that we have not yet reached an agreement, and our return date has been delayed until at least March 8th. Over a week ago, the district asked PERC, the Public Employee Relations Commission, to help facilitate a timely resolution. PERC is impartial and will help us and the union explore solutions that can lead to mutual agreement. And at this time, SCA has declined to let PERC provide those mediation supports. Next slide, please. On Thursday, February 25th, tomorrow, you all, the board, will hold a public work session to discuss possible next steps and planning. And we will continue to work towards a positive resolution with SCA. I recognize the very real fear that many of our staff and maybe some families are experiencing. We've all been touched by COVID. Many of our communities have suffered a lot, and it is really hard to imagine how this will work. But we've also learned a lot since last March. We do know how to mitigate and manage the spread of COVID. We have to keep trying. We have to keep at it. Our students deserve our very best thinking and our very best work in this moment. I'm up for it, hope you are too, and I look forward to our continued work together and the conversation, particularly tomorrow at the special board meeting. So, thank you, President Hampson.
Thank you, Pinagigi Superintendent Juno. Again, I would like to welcome West Seattle High School student Batel Tadessa? Am I saying that correctly?
Tadessa.
Tadessa, thank you. Batel is the president of the International Intersectional Feminist Club and holds leadership positions in both the UN Club and Sunrise Hub at West Seattle. Beyond student activism, Batel likes to get involved in bettering the school community through Link Crew and NHS. I will turn it over to you now, Batel, for your comments, and thank you for that support with your name pronunciation.
Yeah, of course. So, a while back, I logged on to Instagram and found my timeline filled with individuals coming forward with their sexual assault stories. Each survivor echoed how they faced the lack of support and felt alienated. These survivors were my classmates. Survivors need to receive the support. They need to heal. Last year, West Seattle High School was vandalized with the words rape school. Researching my school's sexual assault policy solidified the action I knew I needed to happen. I got my intersectional feminist club together, and we got the ball rolling instantly. We gathered expertise through meetings with sexual assault therapists in our school district's headline task force. In collaboration with school administration, we began a culture shift. We added imperative resources to the student handbook and reworked the language to be supportive. Through school-wide lessons, we have taught students the nuances of consent and equipped them with tools needed to empower survivors, as well as provided a framework to help students cope with someone they know surviving sexual assault. You're only as strong as your weakest link. If someone is struggling, we must work to uplift that person. This work should not exclusively be on the burden of students. When we held our first training, we got over 60 questions. Some of them were heart-wrenching, and others reflected the misinformation and lack of education that students held. It is a responsibility of not just the schools, but this district itself to educate and spearhead this campaign for safer and healthier schools. The district should work to provide more resources and make them widely accessible. I had the privilege to work for the R90 campaign in the fall, and I'm hoping to see those changes implemented soon. But we can't wait. The school board needs to make it a priority to provide quality comprehensive sexual education now. Each school should rework their handbooks to make them inclusive and supportive, add resources to their websites, and implement various trainings throughout the school year. Additionally, the school staff need to receive mandatory trauma-enforced teaching. This is not a one-and-done situation. These changes should be here to stay and reinforced throughout the whole school year, and I hope that we can start to see these changes happening soon.
Wow, thank you so much, Batel. Very inspiring, and I do hope that we can do some work on that together.
Yeah, me as well.
So, yeah, let's definitely stay connected. And please feel free, if you desire or desirous of making comments at any time during this meeting, you can speak up, and we'll be happy to hear your thoughts on any of the things that we are considering. So, we've now reached the consent portion of today's agenda. May I have a motion for the consent agenda?
Absolutely. I move approval of the consent agenda.
Second?
Approval of the consent agenda has been moved by Director Hersi and seconded by Director Rivera Smith. Do directors have any items they would like to remove from the consent agenda?
Yes, Madam President. Director Harris here. I would like to remove the settlement agreement. Thank you.
May I have a revised motion for the consent agenda as amended?
Yes. I move approval of the consent agenda as amended.
Second?
Approval of the consent agenda as amended has been moved by Director Hersi and seconded by Director Rivera Smith. All those in favor of the consent agenda as amended signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed?
No.
The consent agenda has passed with four directors voting, sorry, five directors voting yes, one director voting no. Okay, for the item. And I would now entertain a motion on the agenda item that was removed from the consent agenda. I don't suppose it's possible to get that on the screen? Please bear with us while we bring up the actual name of the item. Or the motion.
President Hampson, would you like me to take it? I have it here.
That'd be great.
Oh, I thought we were supposed to, I thought we were waiting for someone to bring it up on screen. I still can't see it.
Oh, no, I don't know. I don't know if they'll be able to. Go ahead, Director Rivera Smith.
I move that the school board authorize the district's chief legal counsel to take unnecessary actions to resolve the lawsuit filed by former employee Eric McCurdy against the district, which includes a payment of district funds in the amount of $133,333.33 as part of a total settlement amount of $400,000 in exchange for signing the attached settlement agreement, which includes a mutually agreed-upon settlement regarding the statement regarding the settlement of the lawsuit and documentation of accomplishments. Immediate action is in the best interest of the district.
Second.
Okay, this motion was made by Director Rivera Smith and seconded by Director Hersi. And I will call on Director Harris, who removed the item, and then the remaining directors alphabetically for questions and comments, if there are any. Director Harris?
Thank you, Madam President. I could be voting no on this. And this statement is the last paragraph of Exhibit D. The settlement agreement specifically precludes either party from commenting further on the lawsuit or on the settlement. Accordingly, this public statement will be the party's sole statement regarding this subject. More than that, as you can read on Exhibit D, page 11 of 11, I cannot say, which frustrates me in carrying out my fiduciary duty. Thank you.
President Hampson, are we doing anything from here?
Yeah.
Apologies, I was on mute. So, that brings us to Director Hersi for any comments or questions.
I don't have any comments or questions.
Thank you. Director Rankin, any comments or questions?
Um. I guess. Can I ask Director Harris for clarification? The objection is the further, that no further comments are allowed?
Kind of start to see who they are.
Director Harris, would you like to respond to that? And if everyone else can, please mute.
I do not believe that I am allowed to if Chief Legal Counsel Narver wants to weigh in. Perfect.
I'd be happy to weigh in. Good afternoon, this is Greg Narver, Chief Legal Counsel. And also present is Deputy General Counsel John Cirque, who has worked on this lawsuit. That's the subject of the settlement. This was one of the negotiated terms of the settlement that, and agreements like this are not uncommon in resolution of employment-related lawsuits, that the parties agree that there was a dispute, that they have resolved it, that neither party is admitting any fault or liability, and that the parties agree that that's what they're going to say about it, and that going further would tend to prolong the dispute that has been settled by resolution. I understand Director Harris's objection, but this was an integral term of the settlement agreement that was negotiated.
Okay, thanks for the clarification. I don't have any other questions. Okay, Director Rivera Smith?
I guess my only question would be, what happens if somebody does talk about it, either party, after disagreement?
Well, the agreement provides that that's a breach of the settlement agreement, and so there would be remedies available as there would be for breach of a contract. If that's what happens, the other party would need to examine the nature of what happened and whether to exercise those remedies. But it is provided in the settlement agreement that that's a term of the settlement agreement that would be breached if that provision was violated.
Thank you. No further questions.
Director DeWolfe?
No questions.
I have no comments or questions. So, with that, Ms. Wilson Jones, can you please call for a vote on the item?
Director DeWolfe?
Aye.
Director Harris?
No.
Director Hersi?
Aye.
Director Rankin?
Aye.
Director Rivera Smith?
Aye.
Director Hampson?
Aye.
This motion has passed with a vote of five yes to one no.
Thank you, Ms. Wilson Jones. We have now reached the public testimony portion of the agenda. We will be taking public testimony by teleconference today as stated on the agenda. For any speakers watching through SPS TV, please call in now to ensure you are on the phone line when your name is called. Board Procedure 1430 BP provides the rules for testimony, and I ask that speakers are respectful of these rules. I will summarize some important parts of this procedure. First, testimony will be taken today from those individuals called from our public testimony list and, if applicable, the waiting list, which are included on today's agenda posting on the school board website. Only those who are called by name should unmute their phones, and only one person should speak at a time. Speakers from the list may cede their time to another person when the listed speaker's name is called. The total number, total amount of time allowed will not exceed two minutes for the combined number of speakers. And time will not be restarted after the new speaker begins. In order to maximize opportunities for others to address the board, each speaker is allowed only one speaking slot per meeting. If a speaker cedes time to a later speaker on the testimony list or waiting list, the person to whom time was ceded will not be called to provide testimony again later in the meeting, as there is only one speaking slot per person. Those who do not wish to have time ceded to them may decline and retain their place on the testimony or waitlist. Finally, the majority of the speaker's time should be spent on the topic they have indicated they wish to speak about. Ms. Wilson Jones, will you read off the first testimony speaker?
Thank you, President Hampson. Speakers, please remain muted until your name is called to provide testimony. When your name is called, When your name is called, please be sure you have unmuted on the device you are calling from, and also press star six to unmute yourself on the conference call line. Each speaker will have a two-minute speaking time, and a chime will sound when your time is exhausted, and the next speaker will then be called. The first speaker on today's testimony list is Nikhil Chagun.
Hi, so I, I'm a person of color. I've experienced my fair share of performative politics growing up here in Washington, and I've learned how frustrating it can feel to have someone tripping over themselves to, you know, show how much they care about your needs, how sensitive they are to you, and then not sticking up for you or being an ally when it counts. And it's, it's pretty, it's a pretty frustrating feeling. It leaves you feeling, you know, without power, without control, and I don't want anyone else to have to go through that, which is why I believe that we need to start looking at change now. Now, West Seattle High School is a school that, you know, goes through a lot of trouble to show how accepting of a school they are, how much they celebrate their diversity, how much they care about the needs of their marginalized students, but ultimately, the experience of other marginalized students, including myself, has not reflected that. Now, we see things like hate crimes going mostly unaddressed. We see homophobia, racism, antisemitism going unpunished, all these sorts of things. One major example is from my sophomore year. There was an incident where some people vandalized a black student union poster board with racial slurs during the annual club fair. Now, in response to that, we got an official statement from school administration. We got a video discussing how and condemning the issue, and nothing else. There was no follow-up. There was no transparency. We didn't see anything as a result of it. Now, as I've, like, discussed and met with other peers from across the district, I've been noticing that this is something of a pattern. We see bigotry either, you know, acknowledged and then quickly swept under the rug as soon as possible, or just fully ignored, and the victims being left to saddle that burden. Now, we are ready for change. This is not working for, for most people. We are tired of slogans. We're tired of platitudes. We want to start seeing more initiative on the part of individual school administration and the district. We would like to see more thorough investigations of these incidents. We'd like to see following up on reports made by students, transparency, so that we know that all these things are happening. And most importantly, defined punishments and responses to, to indicate that the school really does care about preventing these kinds of incidents, because they can be extremely harmful to marginalized students. Until the district is willing to follow up on these incidents and really do their job in that right, this district will never be a safe space for marginalized students. Thank you.
Thank you, Nikhil. Um, Ms. Wilson Jones?
Next is Lonnie Norman. Lonnie Norman. Lonnie Norman, you may need to press star six. Oh, I see someone is unmuted. We can, yes.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Hello, my name is Yellow Buffalo Stone Woman. My English name is Lonnie Norman Big Spring. I am a sophomore at Chief South High School. Um, today I'll be talking about Billy Frank Jr. Day. Billy Frank Jr. is known as this that fought for uh, First Nations people to teach the equality of strength and human rights. Me and alongside other students feel like Billy Frank Jr. is a good representation of strength and equality amongst us Native people, and that this day needs to be recognized to teach non-native students and adults that there are many good accomplishments that our people have gained and are still working on. I believe that instead of having Columbus being taught to students, that there should be a real history changer that should be recognized instead within our indigenous people. Our lessons should be taught respectfully towards us native students, and colonization needs to end within our school lessons and switch to being true, honest, and real. Thank you.
Thank you, Leilani. Ms. Wilson Jones?
Next is Mia Dabney. Mia Dabney.
Hello, are you able to?
Yes.
Are you able to hear me?
We can hear you, Mia.
Great. Hello, my name is Mia Dabney. I'm a junior at Cleveland, uh, Cleveland High School, and I'm also a member of the NAACP Youth Council. I'm here to speak on how important it is to incorporate student members on the school board, which is named Policy Number 1250. Currently, there is a major separation between the school board and students and SBS. The form of communication and lack of understanding adults have about youth is not helping the students, and it is not comforting, it's not a comforting way to have youth grow. There can't be conversations and decisions about youth without youth present in the conversation. Let me say that again. There can't be conversations and decisions about youth without youth present in the conversation. If decisions about our education are made that impact our future, we should be a part of the decision-making process. I came here to speak because Policy Number 1250 is a way we can help incorporate student voice into decisions that impact them. They will be able to be a part of the change we want to see in our education. Thank you.
Thank you, Mia. Ms. Wilson Jones?
Next is Leah Scott. Leah Scott. Leah Scott? Leah, if you're on the line, you may need to put star six. Moving to the next speaker, um, Angela Niederberger. Angela Niederberger?
Can you hear me?
Yes. Is this Leah or Angela?
Angela.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead, Angela.
Hi, my name is Angela Niederberger. I'm a senior at West Seattle High School and the vice president of my class. Today, I want to introduce the topic of our class's graduation in June, the current plan and how we can improve it. Our senior class in ASB was crushed to hear that the school board consensus as of right now is for virtual graduation. Not only does this deflate any hope of true celebration for our 12 years of hard work, time, dedication, and passion towards our academics, but also feels like a personal wound to the class of 2021. After almost an entire year of not being in the classroom with our friends, and we're depending on our graduation to be a formal closure of our work in high school. Our class, not only in ASB, but in every facet of leadership, such as feminist club, Model UN, National Honor Society, and more, have worked tirelessly to create a welcoming community and environment at the school for years to come. Our deep sadness at the news of a virtual graduation invalidates our years of work at the school and our love for the community that has in turn provided us with so much. We want to be proud alum of West Seattle High School. We want to shake our principal's hand, say goodbye to teachers that changed our lives, be surrounded six feet apart by our peers, who we may be seeing for the last time. A COVID-friendly in-person graduation is possible and in reach if we collaborate as a team dedicated to safely celebrating the next big step for the senior class of 2021. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Ms. Wilson Jones, I wanted to let you know that Leah's, I just got a message that Leah Scott, um, will not be able to make it.
Thank you, President Hampton. Um, next on the list is Bianca K. Ruffel. Bianca Keriffel.
Oh, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, can you hear me?
We can hear you, Bianca.
Okay. Hello, my name is Bianca Keriffel, and I am a senior at West Seattle High School and overall vice president. As a member of ASB, we created a petition in hopes of gaining support from the community to encourage you, the board, to allow us to hold a COVID-safe in-person graduation. Within two weeks, we have already collected 974 and counting signatures. We even received 53 comments from the community supporting our wants of having this graduation. That being said, I will be reading a few comments. From students, we heard, quote, "I go to a private school, and my school is hosting an outdoor COVID-safe graduation. If my school can do it, so can the public schools. After this hardship year, these students, these seniors deserve to see each other one last time and celebrate their accomplishments." Then, quote, "Students are getting everything taken away their senior year. For a lot of people, including me, graduation is something I have been working towards for the last 12 years of my life, and now that's been taken away." A graduated senior from 2020 even said, "Seattle Public Schools could have done more for my graduation, so they should do more for this year's seniors. These kids have been put through enough. I would also like to emphasize a suggestion less about holding graduation at a larger stadium like Memorial Downtown for more space." From parents, we heard, quote, "This may take time and extra effort to plan, but no reason to cancel in February. This year's seniors have had just over 2.5 years of high school. Let them have this." Along with, quote, "With proper care, graduation outside with masks and distancing is the least we can do for the class of 2021. We know so much more about COVID spread than we did last year and can use the knowledge to plan a safe outward graduation. Thank you."
Thank you, Ms. Wilson Jones?
Next is Gavin Mountree. Gavin Mountree. Gavin Mountree? Oh, sorry, go ahead, Gavin.
Sorry about that. Um, hi, I'm Gavin Montreal, senior at West Seattle High School, and just as my fellow peers have spoken on the topic of having a COVID-friendly in-person graduation, I too will speak on this topic. You have all heard and will continue to hear how we as a school, district, and community have had school itself, events, sports, and extracurriculars in-person, all while abiding to CDC guidelines. But I am here to speak on the more personal importance and meaning of an in-person graduation to many students and families. As we all already know, graduation has been a rite of passage into the next chapter of our lives. It's traditional, happens year after year, and when it's time, all are excited to experience that day. But many fail to see and acknowledge the deeper meaning behind the importance of this significant event. Many students, just as myself, do not feel we would make it as far as we have, nor be alive. Others have been told they will not live up to be much and don't have the support system who, to motivate their aspirations. This is simply to a many examples students go through that force them into tough real-life experiences that minimize their level of importance of all other things, including school. This continues to happen as the pandemic has caused a tremendous amount of students to develop depression, anxiety, and much more. So when, so when that student finally gets the graduation, that is a time of remembrance of all they felt they couldn't do being demolished. A time of showing appreciation to all that have fought for that student to win against life. A time of self-gratitude many of us who lack, who lack due to our circumstances. I've only touched the surface of how beneficial and vital it is to the families, students, and staff to have an in-person graduation. Keep in mind, we as students don't want just any old graduation, but rather a safe in-person graduation. I hope you, the board, deeply consider having an in-person graduation. For it's not a matter of giving them titles, unfairness, but a reminder of the tremendous all students have overcome. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wilson Jones?
Next is Chris Jackins. Chris Jackins.
My name is Chris Jackins, Box 84063, Seattle 98124. On hiring an interim superintendent, four points. Number one, the board and the superintendent candidate should do due diligence about each other. Number two, with regard to the board, five points. A, the board is selecting a superintendent much more quickly than it is replacing an empty board seat. B, the board is allowing remote learning to violate student privacy. C, the board adopted a clean energy resolution while it allows construction projects to remove large numbers of trees and grass playfield areas. D, the board is allowing district actions that are disrespectful of the Duamish tribe. E, the board has not reopened the African-American Academy and Indian Heritage High School. Point number three, with regard to the superintendent candidate, two points. A, the candidate was previously the district's Executive Director of Human Resources. At that time, it appeared that the board felt that it had not been kept in the loop about a contract. B, the candidate previously led the district's African-American Male Advisory Committee. It appeared that the committee missed deadlines for publishing its recommendations. Point number four, without due diligence to address these issues, it would be better to not proceed with the hiring. On Billy Frank Jr.'s Salmon Celebration Day, district policy supports treaty rights and benefits for the Duamish tribe. The board consulted a number of tribes on this action, but not the Duamish tribe. On the $3 million Cleveland Forest easement, the district should not be selling off long-term assets. Also, best of luck on safe in-person graduations. Thank you.
Ms. Wilson Jones?
Next is Sarah Sense Wilson. Sarah Sense Wilson.
Thank you, Lisa Rivera Smith and Zachary DeWolfe, for your communication and enthusiastic work with UNEA to co-create a Billy Frank Junior Day Resolution. An annual recognition of Billy Frank Junior Day is important to not only our clear-sky cohort of tribal civic leaders, but to our entire Seattle Public School student population, both native and non-native. In addition to STI curriculum, the Salmon Defense has curriculum specific to Billy Frank Junior Day. I encourage educators to access these resources. I share concerns about SPS bypassing community engagement with the appointment of an interim superintendent. While the selected interim superintendent is qualified, bypassing community input sets bad precedents, and do not forego a procedure designed to support community competence and leadership. We want the interim superintendent to address our concerns regarding Lipton Springs and the dismantling of the native focus. The leadership erroneously proclaims they are aligning with the district's strategic plan. Does the strategic plan call for accelerating inequities for Black and Brown students? If Lipton Springs is aligning with the strategic plan, how can the leadership justify rejecting culturally responsive resources and supports such as traditional foods, medicine, supplies, winter coats, and other assistance for indigenous students and families? I was not aware that Lipton Springs was flush in financial wealth to afford denying resources to assist with improving conditions for students. The district's ongoing harmful practice of blocking cultural enrichment opportunities are a continuation of dirty district politics. Efforts to achieve equity requires the district to retire political gatekeeping practices. Personal ego over student needs results in continued failure, not just for Indian Ed, but for all students. Any semblance of equity in education will only be achieved when institutions develop an ethos grounded in authentic community engagement and where families, youth, and elders are treated as valued partners and included in all levels of decision-making. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wilson Jones?
Next is Kayla Harstad. Kayla Harstad.
Hear me?
Yes.
Hello?
We can hear you, Kayla.
Hi, I'm Kayla Harstad. I'm Turtle Mountain Chippewa and a Sina Boyan Sioux, and I'm a junior at Ingram, and I'm here to advocate for Seattle Public Schools to designate March 9th as Billy Frank Junior Day. The Billy Frank Junior Day Resolution, which was crafted by UNEA Youth and Leadership, calls for supporting the designation of March 9th as a day of remembered celebration and recognition honor of life, legacy, and achievements of Billy Frank Jr. This day needs to be celebrated because when we do hear about indigenous people discussions going on throughout the classroom, it's in the context of history, trauma, and oppression that indigenous people have endured and survived. We need to hear more than that, and we want to celebrate the triumph that we face through the achievements of Billy Frank Jr. and his actions that still live on today. With the designated day of March 9th as Billy Frank Junior Day, the hope is to learn about indigenous heroes of both now and the past, whose work and wisdom can act as inspiration for indigenous students and all students. It is important for us indigenous students to have a person who is represented annually, and we should be able to celebrate someone who's a representation of our own culture, who shows many attributes to what a hero is today. Not only will this day be important for us, but it's important for other communities to learn about Billy Frank Jr. and his achievements as well. We need to recognize Billy Frank Junior Day every March 9th as the Seattle Public School students and staff to learn and celebrate. With Seattle Public Schools' commitment to equality and inclusion, by formally adopting by March 9th as Billy Frank Junior Day, we will bring the steps to inclusion that we need to have. I urge the Seattle Public School Board to support our effort and designate March 9th as Billy Frank Junior Day. It is more important now than ever for Seattle Public Schools to celebrate the first people of this land. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wilson Jones?
Next is Ella Richardson. Ella Richardson.
Hello, um, can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay. My name is Ella Richardson.
My name is Ella Richardson, and I am the ASV president at West Seattle High School. We are nearing the anniversary of the Year of Darkness. We have all fumbled through this past year guided by the light of hope and the belief that it will get better. For a lot of us seniors, getting to walk across that stage at graduation has been a big part of our life. The recent progress we have made in the pandemic bolsters our hope for a non-virtual graduation. Governor Inslee was quoted in mid-February saying that we are making real progress on the pandemic. The FDA just announced today that the Johnson &amp; Johnson COVID-19 vaccine has met requirements for emergency authorization, and J&amp;J has agreed to provide 100 million doses of the vaccine to the U.S. by June. Furthermore, the weekly in-person distribution days held throughout the district and the emergence of outdoor and indoor contact sports shows us that we are capable of adapting our events to conform to COVID-19 protocols, making it clear that some sort of in-person graduation is possible. The light marking the end of this darkness is burning brighter. None of us, the board included, are capable of foreseeing what June will look like. But we are standing here today asking you to hold on to hope, to ask what if? What if conditions by June don't worsen like we all fear, but instead improve? What if we listen to our activities coordinator's ideas for modified in-person graduations and put our energy towards a non-virtual event? Would you be showing us, your students and parents, that our light matters and is important? You would be giving us the ability to look at June with excitement rather than with disappointment at what could have been? Please plan a modified COVID-in, COVID-date in-person graduation for the class of 2021. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Next is Giselle Jenkins. Giselle Jenkins.
Hello?
Go ahead, Giselle.
Okay. Hi, I'm Giselle Salmore from Ingram High School and a descendant from the Aliut tribe. In support of Billy Frank Jr. Day, I will now read the part of UNEA's Billy Frank Jr. Day Resolution. A resolution supporting the designation of March 9th as a day of remembrance, celebration, and recognition of, in honor of the life, legacy, and achievements of Billy Frank Jr., the Skowali Nation, and whereas we, the members of UNEA, ClearSky, and Native Warrior Athletics, do hereby establish and submit the following resolution and whereas Billy Frank Jr.'s remarkable leadership, tireless efforts, and dedication to upholding treaty rights led to historic Bolt's decision, legal victory affirming that the United States would honor the promise made in 1854 in Medicine Creek Treaty, and whereas Billy Frank Jr. was arrested at the age of 14 for fishing salmon in the Niskowali River and subsequently arrested and cited more than 50 times throughout the fishing war era for exercising his treaty rights, protected right to fish for salmon in the usual accustomeded places. And whereas in 1940, 1974, George Bolt reformed the rights of Washington Treaty Sanitary Tribes to take up to one half of the harvested salmon in the western Washington and established tribes as co-managers of the salmon resources and habitat, and now therefore be it resolved that UNEA, NWA, and ClearSky members will educate, advocate, and inform allies and Native communities about the significant critical role of Billy Frank Jr. in protecting, preserving, restoring, and revitalizing salmon in our natural environment and waterways, and be it further resolved that UNEA, NWA, and ClearSky members recognize that Billy Frank Jr.'s legacy and life serves as a guiding light for cost culture, bipartisanship, leadership through collaboration, consultation, and bridge building to ensure protection of natural environment, salmon, and cultural lifeways. Be it further resolved that UNEA, NWA, and ClearSky members stand to remember and acknowledge Billy Frank Jr. for sacrifices and lifelong study fast committed to protect, practice, and enforce treaty rights, tribal sovereignty, and self-determination of all tribal people, communities, and be it finally resolved that UNEA, NWA, and ClearSky members observe and acknowledge March 9th as a day of celebration, remembrance, recognition of Billy Frank Jr.'s life, work, and legacy. I demand that SPS not only designates March 9th of 2021 to celebrate Billy Frank Jr. Day, but every March 9th of all upcoming years. Thank you.
Thank you, Giselle. Ms. Wilson Jones?
Next is Sabrina Burr. Sabrina Burr.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
"Culture is often vibrant, loud, and sometimes quiet and subtle, but you know it when you see it because it has color." Dr. Mona Lake-Jones, "The Color of Culture, 1993." This powerful quote comes from an incredible woman who birthed and raised Brent Jones. "This degree of separation I just realized this weekend in a book dedicated to him and his late sister Dana." But you can, this same quote can be stated about the color of racism, vibrant and loud and sometimes quiet and subtle. That is what I witnessed Dr. Brent Jones experience under the leadership of Superintendent Denise Juno and also with school board directors Harrison Rivera-Smith. It is the school board's primary responsibility to ensure that the district has a leader that uplifts this district, those it employs, as well as the student families and communities that it serves. The fact that he's willing to come back and lead speaks a lot of his character and those that he comes from. The walls this district put up around him, he turned sideways and built bridges, something that I witnessed him doing in his past employment and that he will do in his future leadership. You can use the excuse for the lack of community engagement to quiet and make subtle racism to hide behind, but let us speak the truth loud and proud. There is no other candidate more qualified to turn the many walls built within Seattle Public Schools into bridges of collaboration, continuity, understanding, meeting our goals, and honoring all that we serve. So please, let him be the build bridger, the build, the bid, bridge builder to the next permanent superintendent that will be selected through robust intentional engagement, giving all stakeholders a choice and a voice. Let us hire Brent to help us be in action, what we say in writing. I do not know any other better bridge builder that we need and deserve for this appointment. Please vote yes.
Thank you, Ms. Wilson Jones.
Next is Gia Tran. Gia Tran.
Hi, everyone. Thank you so much for your words. I will be speaking about adopting, SPS adopting March 9th as Billy Frank Jr. Day. I'm a ClearSky intern and a first-generation Southeast Asian American. So Billy Frank is a Niskowali tribal member and fishing and human rights activist. He's done much for the community in terms of environmental conservation, protecting the salmon, managing and restoring waterways. This is all very relevant and local here to Washington. It is really important for, uh, students of color to be able to have heroes in which we can, uh, look up to and have, uh, a connection with, with, uh, Native, Native, uh, heroes and Sheros being uplifted. We would hope that, uh, SPS would make March 9th an annual celebration, every March 9th, continuing from here on after 2021. It is a deep pledge to uplift and represent, and represent Native activists and heroes. There's a Billy Frank Jr. Day petition on change.org. It is change.org/BillyFrankJrDay. We have 345 signatures so far, so we are making really good progress, and I hope that we can continue to see this movement, uh, continue on. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wilson Jones.
Next is Anya Sousa-Ponce. Anya Sousa-Ponce.
Hi. I'm a freshman at Ballard High School, and I'm a member of the NAACP Youth Council. I'm here to speak on Policy 1250, a youth representation on the school board. Our current system doesn't represent us, especially as youth of color, no matter how well-intentioned it is. Right now, if there's a problem with racist leadership, for example, at a school, our concerns as students have to go through so many layers: to the teacher, then to the principal, then the chief of schools. If we file a formal complaint with the Office of Student Civil Rights, it has to go through Human Resources, then the Director of Employee and Association Relations, then the Chief of Human Resources, in order to finally get to the superintendent. That might be appropriate for a single complaint. One, there's an entire systemic failure that we, uh, students are aware of, but which aren't getting discussed at a level where policy can be made, then our voice is entirely missing from the conversation. When you have engaged students serving on the school board, you give the rest of the school board and the superintendent a direct line to the experience of being a student in Seattle Public School System, and that, how you make positive change? By bringing together the people who need the change and the people who can make it happen, especially when students of color have historically received so much less protection and focus than their white peers. Thank you.
Thank you, Anya.
Next is, next is Sean Alice Hubbard. Sean Alice Hubbard.
My name is Sean Hubbard. My family is made up of alums and neighbors of Northgate Elementary School. We argue that Northgate School should be saved, but we have no argument with honoring James Baldwin in the renaming. What we protest is the process. By using Mr. Baldwin's name, you espouse his principles of equality and justice. However, the process by which the schools has forced this new building onto the community has been less than equal and just. From the restricted design process to now the renaming, the underrepresented voices of the neighbors, neighbors themselves have either not been invited nor paid heed. Our neighborhood is giving up a lot: loss of the communal playfield, loss of views and quiet and easy streets, and the demolition of a historical building. The district justifies this by labeling Northgate School with a negative image. This is not the fault of the building nor the neighborhood. The school was once new and proud. We neighbors and alums are sad and angered that the district stopped loving this school and its playfield, and now the district finds it easier to demolish the building and construct on top of our only green space, to erase the neglect of their own making. If you truly want to honor the legacy of James Baldwin, mind his quote, "One goes to the unprotected and listens to their testimony." In the push to build something new, the district would not listen. They not only circumvented the neighbors, but neglected to include the original neighbors, the Duamish people. In order to assure the Duamish that their cultural resources are valued, the district should conduct a soil profile on the Northgate School site before the bulldozers descend. This is the recommendation of the hearing examiner, and it's the least you can do. Please review your own resolution, 201617-1. I ask the district to walk the talk of their belief in community engagement and listen to the community of neighbors early on in the game. Anyone would prefer a state of the table rather than be faced with trying to stop a wrecking ball. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Wilson Jones?
Next is Brooke Stromy. Brooke Stromy.
Hello, my name is Brooke Stromy, support staff to UNEA. First off, I would like to express my support for UNEA's call for the Seattle School Board to officially recognize March 9th as Billy Frank Jr. Day on an annual basis. I urge the board to commit to recognizing this holiday on an annual basis, not just in 2021. Next, the COVID-19 pandemic continues to negatively impact the Native community. We conducted a survey amongst the families we serve throughout December and January. I will share with you some of our findings in hopes that you take action toward supporting these families. These are the most common challenges that families reported they are currently experiencing with SPS: not enough direct outreach to families by Indian Ed, lack of advocacy by Indian Ed, students' IEP is not being followed, not enough individualized support for students, laptops provided not working properly, not getting necessary assistance with Wi-Fi, teachers not having systems in place to notice when students are disengaged, and weekend food packs are by pickup only, limiting access for those without transportation. In regards to what supports/services are most critical for them at this time, these were the most common responses: assistance with food and basic necessities, mental health resources and support, educational advocates, assistance with bills, technology support, better internet connection, tutoring opportunities, community engagement, and transportation. We urge Indian Ed and Seattle School Board to find ways to respond to these needs. We also call on Indian Ed and SPS to increase communication and the sharing of resources and information between families, UNEA, and other organizations currently serving Native youth and families in Seattle. SPS students and families are losing out on valuable resources, such as winter coats, food deliveries, academic support, cultural learning activities, and community gatherings/virtual events specifically for our urban Native community. Research reports the importance of educational institutions bridging community resources and linking disadvantaged and underserved populations with culturally responsive support services. It is critical, more so now than ever, for families to have access to all resources available to them. Thank you for your time.
Ms. Wilson Jones?
Next is Florence K. Fiddler. Florence K. Fiddler.
You can hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
So I call to talk about equity in education. Equity in education is supposed to mean equal access. That doesn't mean equal standing. That doesn't mean you get a banana, I get a banana. It means people get what they need to get to have equal access to education. The school board is elected by region, and none of those regions really reflect who I or my family are. The Native community doesn't have a set neighborhood that is predominantly Native, and so while there are natives on the school board, they're, they're elected by their neighborhood, their community, um, not by the Native community. The parent committee is not a, a parent committee for the Indian Ed program is not really representative of the greater Native community because it's limited to only parents of 506 students. And a lot of our Native students don't have a 506 form for a number of reasons. So the people on the board who happen to be Native are not our representatives because they are assigned to us, not selected. They are not elected by our community. So we shouldn't be told we have to go through them. They are not our representatives. They're not answerable to us. They don't do community engagement, like they do community engagement with their neighborhood that elected them, but none of you are doing community engagement with the Native community. None of you are doing, you know, like meetings like this, Zoom meetings, call-in meetings. There is not a community engagement process for the Native community, although it's been promised every year for like 35 years that the school board was going to find a way to do that. We have not. Are you done with that bell? Is the bell done now? And so what I'd like to ask for is for the school board to come up with some ideas to provide truly equal access to education and truly equal access to the gatekeepers for that education.
Thank you, Kay. Ms. Wilson Jones?
Next is Anne Goodchild. Anne Goodchild.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Great, thank you. My name is Anne Goodchild. I'm a parent of two Seattle Public High School students, and I'm frustrated and dismayed by the lack of urgency and commitment you've demonstrated to getting all kids back in the classroom. Our children need safe, in-person instruction. You must know that school closures are having a devastating effect on students' learning, mental health, physical health, and social and emotional well-being. You must know that distance learning is not an adequate substitute for live, in-person instruction. You must know that school closures are disproportionately impacting historically marginalized children. You must know that schools can be safely reopened with measures in place to mitigate the spread of the virus. Children in private schools and in other districts and in other countries have returned to the classroom. Every day that you prolong entirely or largely entirely remote learning exacerbates inequities and leaves Seattle's public school children behind. In 12 months of remote learning, my children have never been asked for their feedback. I've tried repeatedly and in many ways to share our experience and I've tried repeatedly and in many ways to share our experience, and in fact, I emailed every one of the members of the school board on the 26th of January and have not received a single response. I have also emailed the superintendent. It leaves me with a sense that you do not want to hear, and your comments about the success of distance learning feel disingenuous. It is unjust to continue to deny in-person educational opportunities to our students, and your delay exacerbates the mental health crisis and pushes your students farther from educational justice. I beg of you to put your students first, for the SCA, the district, and the school board to put aside their differences, to refocus on our students, and urgently address the return of students to the classrooms. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Wilson Jones?
Next is Angela Herndon. Angela Herndon. Angela Herndon, you may need to press star six if you're on the line. Angela Herndon. One more time, you'll need to press star six if you're on the line, Angela. I see someone just joined. Is that Angela by any chance?
It is. Technical issues. Hello.
Go ahead, Angela.
I see the agenda for the special school board meeting tomorrow includes ending the reopening plan, and many hope that this plan includes the other 11 grades not already offered an in-person option in the current plan. I know that the OSPI may withhold federal COVID relief money for districts without a reopening plan through a minimum of grade five. I know that for many in the SBS community, bringing back through grade five won't be enough. Virtual learning was meant to be temporary until it was safe enough to go back in person. The problem is, who decides when and what is safe enough? The community is just asking for a plan that looks at the guidance given by local and federal officials. I think we were all relieved on December 16th when Inslee released a new Washington Department of Health metric for opening schools, but SBS is only planned for pre-K through first, even though most of our neighboring districts are planning for phasing in other grades. We just don't understand how our district can be so different from the hundreds and hundreds of other districts around the country and even locally that are open or planning to reopen for all grades. In response to the fear and uncertainty about schools, Biden CDC created new guidance with the blessing of the National Teachers Union. Many critics said the CDC was too restrictive and that some schools who were already in person wouldn't even qualify. Here in Seattle, our COVID rates are among the lowest in major cities, and in the state of Washington, we're close to the bottom of the 50 states. King County is in CDC reopening level orange, hybrid for K-12 with mitigations, all of which it appears you've actually planned for. We're nearly in the yellow category, full-time in person with K-12, physical distancing to the greatest extent possible, so not necessarily six feet. We're close to that level. If state and federal guidelines recommend our school buildings open, please follow the guidance of experts.
Ms. Wilson Jones?
Our 20th and final speaker today is Amaya Hurege. Hurege? Amaya Hurege?
Yeah.
Oops. Apologies for the timer. Go ahead, Amaya.
My name is Amaya Horege, and I'm a fifth-grade dual-language program student at Concord Elementary. Concord Elementary is like my second home because there are many friends and teachers that are loving to me. I'm here to talk to you about the technology problems we have been facing in our classroom and to represent my class after we have decided this is the best topic to discuss. First, there has been many problems with the hotspots and computers. A few of the hotspots don't work, and the computer will sometimes malfunction, causing the computers to not let my friends in class. This means students can't learn and they miss out on their education through no fault of their own. There have been a few students who have not been able to use their charger because it won't charge the computer. For example, for the first couple of months, my district computer wouldn't work. The charger wouldn't charge my computer, and I couldn't use it. I was very lucky that my mom let me use her computer. That didn't mean there are no problems, though. One of the problems was that I couldn't unmute. It was really frustrating for me. That meant I couldn't participate in class when I really wanted to. I had to put my ideas in the chat. Everyone had already put their comments in the chat, so often my ideas would be missed. I love going to school, so going through those problems made me frustrated and upset, even though me and my mom tried to fix my microphone every day. Problems like this happen all the time, every day, not only in Concord but in schools all over Seattle. I'm here to ask you to help us ensure that we have the right technology, then all the students can focus and participate in learning. For example, helping us fix all the glitches and teams that cause disruptions and frustrations. This is important to address because it has been taking over half of the academic year. Students and teachers are struggling, so there needs to be change. Thank you.
Thank you, Amaya. You're amazing. Ms. Wilson Jones?
That was our 20th speaker for today.
I don't... Oh, great. Okay, thank you so much. Okay, that concludes our public testimony for the meeting. We will now move... Oops. Oh, I did that incorrectly. Okay, we will... We have now come to the Board Committee Reports section of the agenda. We will hear briefly now from the chairs of each of the boards' four committees. The chairs will also lead off the discussion for each of our action and introduction items later in the agenda, so comments for those items can be made at that time. We'll also return to general board comments at the end of the agenda. We'll go first to Audit and Finance Committee Director Hersi. I don't know if you've met since that time.
We have not, but there are some general updates that I can provide really quickly. Our next Audit and Finance quarterly meeting is going to be on March 2nd. We will also, I'm very proud to announce, be interviewing three candidates to serve in two public advisory roles for the A&amp;F Committee. This work was started by Director Hampson last year, and I'm really happy to continue it on and to have a couple of folks join us and bring their expertise to the committee. We also have a budget work session next week on March 3rd, so it's going to be a pretty busy week for Audit and Finance. I know folks have been tracking very closely the developments as we look for solutions at our looming budget crisis as we continue to negotiate a return to school. There are many other factors, and so for all those who are listening and who are interested in listening in and being a part of those conversations as much as the public is allowed to be, we would love to have you join us on March 3rd for our budget work session. That's all we've got at this time. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Director Hersi. And then that takes us to the Operations Committee, Director DeWolff.
Thank you, President Hampson. Just as an update, between our Operations Committee meeting and our last regular board meeting, we did not have an Operations Committee meeting, and I did give our update at the last meeting, and actually, all of the items are on our agenda today, so I won't give an update, but our next meeting is scheduled for March... Sorry about the delay. March 11th, so we'll see folks there.
Thank you. And then Student Services Curriculum and Instruction Director Rankin.
Thank you. Yeah, we also have not had our monthly meeting since the last school board meeting. Our next meeting of the Student Services Curriculum and Instruction Committee is on March 16th, and at that meeting, we will have one item of particular interest I'll just note is an update with a new and more detailed timeline on the restraint and isolation policy, including some more discussion about a forum that I hope a lot of members of public will want to attend to learn about the work that will be coming up later this spring. And also, just to highlight for folks, also on March 3rd, we have two work sessions. One is the budget work session that Director Hersi mentioned, and the other will be a work session on social studies, ethnic studies, Black Studies, American Indian Studies, how those items intersect and relate, and how they are different, and just talking about how we are moving forward in that work and in... Yeah, just an update on that. So anyone interested in ethnic studies and those other areas that have been a focus of attention, please join us to listen in on that work session and find out what is happening currently in the district.
Thank you. And then also, the Executive Committee, which I chair, has not met since our last meeting. We meet again on March 17th, and I don't have our final agenda for that meeting yet, but do note that for consideration of any items that are going to be scheduled to come forward into these board meetings are scheduled via the Executive Committee meeting, and so if you're looking for what's coming up, that is the meeting to listen to or the agenda to watch, because that is where we discuss those things and also encourage fellow board members to let me know about any updates so that we can start to get things in a more timely basis and not leave our staff having to rush on so many things. Let's see, so now we go to our action items. We will move now to action item number one, hiring of Dr. Brent C. Jones as interim superintendent and approval of interim superintendent's employment agreement. May I have a motion for this item?
It will be a distinct honor. I moved at the school board hired Dr. Brent C. Jones as interim superintendent with an official start date of July 1st, 2021, based on the terms of the interim superintendent's employment agreement for Dr. Jones as attached to this board action report, and authorize Board President Chandra Hampson to take the necessary steps to sign and implement the agreement.
Second.
This item has been moved by Vice President Hersi and seconded by Director Rivera Smith. And as I have introduced this item on two occasions before, in bringing Dr. Jones's initial consideration to interim negotiations to a prospective contract, and then where I spoke at length about his qualifications and candidacy, and then I was also proud to bring forward what I think is this contract at our last board meeting on an introductory basis. So there's been quite a bit of time in between each of those segments for consideration and questions to be brought up, and thus far have been incredibly heartened at the positive response that we've received from community members and family, both families and staff, that are excited to see Dr. Jones come forward to take on this role in this critical, critical time. But rather than speak more on that, I'm going to let my Vice President, Director Hersi, take the gavel right now and introduce this a little bit further before we turn it over to directors for some questions and comments.
Thank you very much. And rather than going into the almost immeasurable list of qualifications and accolades that Dr. Jones potentially brings to the district, what I would really like to focus on is some of the information and conversations last night that we had at our District 7 meeting, where the Seattle Council PTSA, in partnership with many parents across the southeast part of the city, were able to collect over 600 survey responses around families of color and how they are feeling about returning to school. And some of the things that I took away from that space and learning about the responses to that survey were the needs of our families. And the needs of our families are really focused on how are we going to safely get our students back? How are we... And when we say safely, we're not just talking in means of COVID, but also safety against the violence that happens to our students on a regular basis. But how do we not only do that, but also hold the duality for so many of our African-American and Black families? That there are folks in our system who desperately are yearning for our supports, especially those who have children in special education environments, who we need to be supporting in buildings. But there are also folks in our system, Black folks and Black families, that have children who are thriving for this moment that they are at home and accessing their learning differently, but who still need supports from our system, right? And so being able to understand and really come from a place of not only living and experiencing that duality, as we think about how that context needs to be placed against our system as a whole, being able to thread the needle in more than one way, we are heading and are currently living in very complex times. We are living in times where we are up against a moving target, which seems like almost on a daily basis, as we learn more about this pandemic and the effects that it's had on our system. So as we move forward, looking for a leader who not only has an intimate understanding of our system, but shares the lived experiences of the very people we are trying to reach most, this, as we have seen, based on our community response, is considered by and large a win for so many families in our system who have been looking and yearning for authentic representation for a long time. And as I said before, I could not be happier that we are at this moment, and I am really hopeful that we will be able to adequately seize this opportunity. So with that, we're going to be moving into questions from our fellow directors. We're going to go in alphabetical order, starting at the bottom, so we will begin with Director Lisa Rivera Smith.
Thank you. Thank you for those words, Director Hersi. I'm definitely... I'm happy that we're getting to the point where we've come today to have this final vote. Is Dr. Jones here, I believe?
Well, remember, Rivera Smith, I am here.
Oh, awesome. Thank you. Good to see you. I... Yeah, I'm glad that... I was really happy to hear about the engagement last night from Director Hersi, because that is what we want to be... We really need to focus on, and that probably, right there, that's one of our biggest obstacles right now, is having that engagement with our families to know what their needs are and how we can move forward in that way. Can I ask you, what do you see as the most immediate thing you want to tackle and face or as you... When you start, I mean, there's so many. I hate to ask you that question, but just thinking about this, because I'm trying to get an idea of what your priorities are with becoming into the district. Can I find... Can I hear what a few of those are?
Sure, and one of the hallmarks of my leadership will be that we engage with families and students, staff, board members, and we co-create what some of those items are. We will be very deliberate in how we assess what the needs are in families. And so some of the basic things off the top that we were all faced with is really this concept of bringing, maybe even take a page out of President Biden's book, bringing us back better. We want to make sure that we center equity in how we return to school. We want to make sure that we have the basic services, digital access, all the food scarcity items that we've been looking for, really just focusing on the needs of parents, students, and making sure that our educators have what they need to continue their wonderful pedagogy in the classrooms. And so it's a gamut of things that we need, but we'll co-create and we'll define that together.
Thank you. Thank you for sharing that, because it's no small feat what you're willing to take on, so I thank you for that bravery and for all of us as we are moving forward here. You know, I've said before, and you know this, that I wish we had time to do more engagement on this process, but I also, you know, I don't want to be mistaken that I don't want to complicate you. My desire for the engagement is not speak towards my recognition of your qualifications as a candidate. I can be simultaneously disappointed in the lack of engagement, but also encouraged and recognized your caliber as a candidate, so I hope that those who aren't completed because I appreciate that you're stepping up here, and I don't feel that I'm being disingenuous in acquisitions of both. So, thank you. I have no further questions or comments.
Thank you, Director Rivera Smith. Next, we'll go to Director Rankin.
Hi. Hi, Dr. Jones. Thanks for being here. I'm going to...
I'm going to be as brief as I can and, and just say that I gratefully support this item. The idea that someone who is from Seattle Public Schools and is aware of the context that we are operating in right now with COVID and is still willing to return to lead us at the conclusion of our current superintendent's contract is remarkable. And in a, you know, we, we don't have a pool of people in front of us who are dying to have this spot. And I feel really fortunate that of the, the person that we do have to consider, that he is as qualified as he, as he is, you know, we're, we're not just taking the only option. Our option, our, our candidate is a good one. And we, in a time when there are so many things that are uncertain and there is so much tension between various groups and everyone's just at their, maybe you can hear it in my voice, but a little bit of shakiness, everyone's at just their limit. I think the best thing that we can do for our community as a whole right now is something decisive that gives some certainty. And I think there will be a, I know I will breathe a big sigh of relief knowing that we have our next steps in place. And given that feedback that we've heard has been about, you know, wishing there were more engagement, but nothing that's objectionable to the candidate more about the process. I think, you know, I have no, no hesitancy in, in my support for this item.
All right. Thank you, Director Rankin. Next, we will move to Director Harris.
Thank you, Vice President. I, I will be voting no. It's not a personal vote. It's an objection to not having community engagement. And I would take issue with the concept that this is, no one else came forward. We didn't ask. All that said, I consider Dr. Jones a friend. I will give him my very best efforts. And I hope that some of the things, excuse me, that Dr. Jones will tackle, will have the courage to push back on the Biden administration's current edict today or yesterday about testing all of our students this year in pandemics, that he will have the courage to push back on the legislature and the governor and even entertain the concept of litigation for special ed funding and for the transportation STARS program that is about as inequitable for the Seattle Public Schools district as is possible. McClary did not, did not address our funding. The prototypical model has never been funded. And I hope that his strong and courageous leadership will lead us into a place that we can make that well-known and see if we can get some relief, because the way this district is treated by the state is beyond unacceptable. And again, I well appreciate that the vote will be to appoint Dr. Brent Jones as the interim superintendent. And again, I'll give him my very best effort. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Harris. We will now move to Director Hampson.
The only additional thing I would have to say at this moment is just supreme gratitude to you, Dr. Jones, for your willingness to consider taking this role. This is a, a heavy lift at a heavy time. And what I know about you and your leadership and your, the person that you are, it is not, it is not shiny, it's not ego, it's not about achievement, it's about community, it's about relationship, and it's about connection. And those are the things that we need at this very, very critical time. And I am going to, to breathe a big sigh of relief and, and also apology for, for bringing you into this, this difficult place that we're in. But I, I think that I'm looking forward, so very much looking forward to the partnerships and relationships that we're all going to build together as board and superintendent and community and staff and more important than anyone, and I, I know from you more than anything, that you are interested in putting our students first. And I'm, I just, I can't wait to do that work together. So thank you.
Thank you, Director Hampson. Director DeWolff.
Thank you, Vice President Hersi. I, I had a really great opportunity to connect and chat with Dr. Brent Jones between introduction and action and had just really meaningful and special conversation. We focused a lot on community engagement, really being accessible to families and a leader when it comes to community engagement. And so I really am looking forward to this opportunity. I think we certainly need some renewed energy. And so I'm really looking forward to supporting this. And it's going to be a long road, Dr. Brent Jones. We've got a lot of work to do. And I feel very confident from our conversation that you understand that, you're aware of that. And so you, you understand and recognize your responsibility and are still eager to be here and do this work with, with the district and the board. So I am eager and excited for this opportunity to bring you on. And I'll be voting yes proudly and happily. And I'll turn it back over to you, Vice President Hersi.
All right. Thank you, Director DeWolff. I believe now we will move to a roll call vote. Is that correct?
Yes, Ms. Wilson Jones, would you please call for the vote?
Director Rankin?
Aye.
Director Rivera Smith?
Aye.
Director DeWolff?
Aye.
Director Harris?
No.
Director Hersi?
Aye.
Director Hampson?
Aye.
Passed by a vote of five yes to one no.
And now I would like to ask Dr. Jones, would you like to say just a few words?
Yeah, thank you, Board President Hampson, board members, superintendent. You know, you're online. This is great. This is fantastic. We know this is going to be a tremendous endeavor. I'll be very brief, because soon we're going to be working hand in hand to meet the outcomes in this Seattle Excellence Strategic Plan. We're going to take the necessary actions, steps, that are going to be, that are going to lead to tremendous opportunities for SPS students. I'm looking forward to having a great relationship with you and achieving some outstanding results. I'm grateful for this opportunity and I'm looking forward to get started. So thank you so much and let's get to work.
Okay, thank you. And please rest up. Because you're going to need it. And that brings us to our next item, which is the approval of Resolution 2020 slash 2122, designating March 9th, 2021 as a day of observance, recognizing and honoring the life and legacy of Billy Frank Jr. This is coming to us for introduction and action. I'm going to hand it over to Director DeWolff, who has led this effort. And he and Director Rivera Smith and I are all three sponsoring this item. And we'll be providing the briefing. I'm going to start with Director DeWolff and he'll hand it back to me at the appropriate time. Unless you want me to start, Director DeWolff.
Thank you, President Hampson. I'm just going to set up context. I'm going to throw it back over to you.
Okay.
And then we can kind of roll through if anybody asks me questions. So I just want to raise my hands up, say thank you, say hi, hi, in my traditional free language and hands up to our students. I want, I want to just call out Giselle Jenkins, Lonnie Norman, Kayla Harstev, Gia Tran, Hunter Sherbeck, Sarah Sense Wilson, and all of the, the young leaders from the Clear Sky Youth Council and Urban Native Education Alliance. Director Rivera Smith connected with Sarah about a month, maybe a little over a month ago, about an idea to recognize and observe March 9th as Billy Frank Jr. Day. Billy Frank Jr. is an incredibly important local and regional leader and a native leader. He's from the Nisqually Nation. And so it was a really special opportunity. And so I just want to share my gratitude to the young people from Clear Sky Youth Council, UNEA, for, for allowing us the opportunity to collaborate with you on this. I was really grateful for Giselle for reading the UNEA resolution. That was basically the basis for the resolution that you're seeing today. And as part of the background, Director, President Hampson and I are the tribal liaisons for the school board and we were really, we wanted to connect with folks from the Nisqually Nation, Muckleshoot Nation, Chippewa Nation, and here, folks from SPS. And just to make sure that this is a really robust resolution. And so where we landed, I'm really proud of. I hope that it speaks to the, the community. And I would just encourage folks to come back each year to observe Billy Frank Jr. Day on March 9. I will turn it over to President Hampson again. I know that you have some words that you'd like to share, that you have a personal connection to Billy Frank Jr. And then we can do a round of questions from directors before we move to the vote. And just for clarification, this item is for introduction and action as one of the small bits of power that the president has. She can uplift and bring up bars and resolutions right to the, right to the regular board meeting. And today is an example of that. And so we're really grateful that we found some space on this agenda. So we can quickly approve this because March 9th is approaching and the next regular board meeting is not until March 10th. So this was the, the only, the only date on the calendar we could get to make sure that we did it before the day. As we wanted to encourage our educators and young people to be utilizing this since time immemorial curriculum to, to learn about Billy Frank Jr., fish wars, tribal treaty rights, and other important issues in Native history here in Washington State. So I'll turn it back over to President Hampson and then we'll do some questions.
Thank you. And yeah, I want to make sure, I want to give some, say thank you to the students for bringing this back to us. It was actually something that Native and American Indian Ed staff and Director DeWolff had actually floated last year. And just as we were getting ready to work on it, we started, we ran into issues around the, the pandemic. And so we didn't, we didn't make it. We were shut down by, you know, March 12th. It was an intense time. So I, I think if, had the students not brought this forward, we would have neglected to come back around to, to try to get this instituted. And I, and I heard the students talking about wanting to, to make sure that it is an annual thing. And we will look at how it is that we get this established in the calendar for Seattle Public Schools as opposed to the, just the resolution. I will say there's some benefit to doing an annual resolution because it reminds everyone. Well, first of all, it gets us, gives us a chance to update and correct any inaccuracies or, or just new information that we have, so that it continues to be a living, community-engaged document. So there's that benefit to having it be an annual resolution. But I also think it'd be, I agree, it's important that it's, it's listed in the calendar. And, and I think that most folks listening today, staff and community probably don't know anything about Billy Frank Jr., though I grew up always knowing exactly who he was and how important he was to the Pacific Northwest Native community and particularly to the, the life ways that our, our salmon and our, our rivers and our, our oceans. And, and so, but I want to give shout out to our resident historians and, and American Indian Studies staff, Shannon Brown and Gail Morris for helping us. And also to Valerie Seegrest at Muckleshoot for helping us on, on this and trying to make sure that, that we struck the right recognition tone. If, if nothing else, Billy was, he was a, a sometimes loud and sometimes quiet, but, but definitely always a humble person in his absolute belief in the, the salmon and the fish and the importance of that as the keystone species in this ecosystem. And so I'm fortunate enough to have, at the, the time that, that he passed away, somebody very close to me wrote something that I'm going to share with you now that represents very much about who Billy Frank was. Billy Frank was like spring weather on the Salish Sea. Now a steady driven wind with rain, now a small tempest, now gentle with eyes gleaming like sun off calm waters. When he shook your hand, he grabbed you and made you feel like you were part of something really important, somebody he needed to help them. Right now, to win the day for the salmon, for all the creatures, for all the people, for the people, for all the people. Billy Frank taught us that the gold in the river was fool's gold. The real gems were the eggs in the reds. The true light came in the gleam of the sun off the backs of the smolt running to the sea. The best reward was the salmon coming home to the people who have cared for them since the beginning. Billy is now casting his line on the bank of the Saints and he deserves to be with the best of them. The guys who stood up at Frank's Landing, the stars and the common fishers. Guys like Joe Dilla Cruz, Quinale, Marlon Brando, and Dick Gregory, heroes like Gandhi, Martin Luther King, and Nelson Mandela. He'll be teaching them how to fish. They'll be listening and he'll be laughing. God damn it, they'll be laughing. Thank you, Billy. And I'm so grateful to be able to be part of this today. So with that, let's see, may I have, sorry?
President Hampson, I wonder if we could start with Director Rivera Smith too, as the third cosponsor on this?
Yes, well, I'm, did, we did the, did we actually have the motion made? Because I was going to ask her to make the motion. I don't think we made the motion.
Actually, I think you're right.
So Director Rivera Smith, can you go ahead and make the motion?
Of course. I move that the school board approve Board Resolution 2020, 2020 slash 21 dash 22, designating March 9th, 2021 as Billy Frank Jr.'s Salmon Celebration Day to honor his life and legacy. Immediate action is in the best interest of the district.
Second.
This motion has been moved by Director Rivera Smith and seconded by Director DeWolff. And I will now go to Director Rivera Smith for this first round of comments and questions.
Thank you. Thank you. Yes, thank you, Directors Hampson and DeWolff for your work on this. It was, I was definitely honored when Clear Sky brought this to us and reached out and honored to have sat down and met with them. It was, it was truly inspiring to see their energy, their resolution, oh, no pun intended, resolution to bring this resolution to SPS. As student speakers came today to speak on, and I'm so proud to hear them, Kayla, she said Billy Frank Jr.'s working wisdom can act as an inspiration and not just for native students, but for all our students. We can all, I think we can all benefit to stem from examples, as Leilani said, that are true, honest, and real. So thank you, students, so much for your work on this, to Sarah Sense Wilson for guiding them. And I'm excited to vote on it. Thank you.
Okay, Director Hersi.
I'm just excited to move this forward. I don't have any questions or comments and could not move quickly enough.
Director Harris?
Thank you, Madam President. I'm delighted, excited about this resolution. And I would suggest that we go a couple of steps further and put it on our work plan this next year. I'd like to see us rename a school for Billy Frank Jr. I'd like to make it an annual resolution, which doesn't obviate the fact that we can update it and celebrate it prior to that time in February of years future. We have schools named after extraordinarily racist individuals from history. And I can think of a couple of schools that might want to be renamed in honor of this gentleman. And I would suggest as well, that because of the efforts of Billy Frank Jr. and the Native communities and Federal Judge George Bolt, we would not have salmon at all in the Salish Sea if it weren't for the efforts of the Native tribes and communities, their hatcheries, and their respect for our environment. And I thank everyone that came forward to put this forth. And I'm very pleased to see that there is recognition and collaboration with UNEA and the students it serves. Thank you.
Director Rankin?
Thank you. Just a huge thanks to everyone who worked on this and brought this forward, especially students. And Director Harris, I have the exact, the same thought. Seems, this seems like an appropriate, an appropriate person to honor and recognize and put that on the list of potential, potential name changes, Billy Frank Jr. would be great. And I also just thank you to President Hampson for the, sharing the beautiful words that you, that you read. Yeah, nothing but support.
Thank you. And also, I want to make sure that we lift up our hands to Willie Frank Jr. Director DeWolff, do you want to, since you did most of the communication, do you want to give that thanks for allowing us?
Thank you so much. Thank you, President Hampson. Yeah, just hands up to, and hi hi to Willie Frank Jr. III, who is a Nisqually council person, but also is part of Billy Frank Jr.'s family. So it was really special to be able to connect with Willie. And he gave his approval for this. And actually, as a small, small bit of behind the scenes news, as, again, as part of the role with tribal nations liaison, building relationships with the tribal nations here in Washington State, I did have a conversation with Willie, and he was very comfortable and did approve of a future opportunity where we did want to rename a school in honor of Billy Frank Jr. So for that small, small bit, they've given the thumbs up. And I think it just behooves us to engage in those conversations. And just as a small preview, Director Rankin and I are already working on a resolution. Probably won't come out for a little while, just because of all the stuff we have to work on, but to do a, to do a formal auditing process of all the names of the schools in our district and identify schools that need to be renamed. So that's coming in a little bit, but just as a preview. And again, I just want to lift up the young people that did so much work on this, but also showed up today to speak in front of you, to speak, you know, on SPS TV and how, you know, scary and nerve wracking that can be. I'm really proud of them for coming and speaking truth and working so passionately to get this resolution passed. And so I just want to raise my hands up to them and thank them again for this opportunity to collaborate with them.
Okay, Ms. Wilson Jones, the roll call, please.
And President Hampson, I apologize, I did not catch who the second was on this. Do you recall?
Director DeWolff.
Thank you, thank you, Director DeWolff.
And apologies, I went out of order on the actions, so that was, I contributed to the confusion.
No problem. So calling the roll then, Director Rivera Smith?
Aye.
Director DeWolff?
Proudly aye.
Director Harris?
Aye.
Director Hersi?
Aye.
Director Rankin?
Aye.
And Director Hampson?
Aye.
This motion has passed unanimously. Thank you, and congratulations, and thank you, Pinagigi, again, to the youth for keeping us on our toes, and thank you to staff for allowing us to move this through as quickly as we did, because it was a huge lift to get it through on that short of a timeline.
President Hampson, if I could also just make a small request, too. I wonder if we could, once we get the resolution kind of all completed and it's all, it's a cleaned up version and it's signed, I wonder if we can just make sure to send an official copy to our, to the young people of Clear Sky Youth Council and Urban Native Education Alliance?
Absolutely. I hope staff will help me with that. I know we have plans for some communication press about that as well. So we will add that to that. Okay, we will now move to introduction, item number one, motion to adopt Board Policy 1250, School Board Student Members and amend Board Policy Number 1240 Committees. This came through the exec committee on February 10 for approval. Directors DeWolff and Hersi are sponsoring this item and will be providing the briefing. Over to you. You're on mute, are you on mute? Oh, yeah, go ahead.
Thank you, President Hampson. Yeah, so I just, you know, I want to just, again, today feels very, at least in these last couple of items, just really student centered, and I really just feel so proud about that, both with the hiring of superintendent, also, you know, centering our youth in our Billy Frank Jr. Day resolution, and also this, which is the culmination of many months of work between myself, Director Hersi, Senior Legal Counsel Ronald Boye, and most especially young folks from the NAACP Youth Coalition. And I just am so honored and grateful and really proud to have spent the last few months working diligently with these young folks on the student, School Board Student Members. This is a, this is a brand new policy, and I just am so proud of their work to both do the research, do the community organizing, do the advocacy, meet with school board directors. They, we met pretty regularly with our Senior Legal Counsel Ronald Boye and Director Hersi, Senior Vice President Hersi. And so what you see here is a product of those few months, those months of work, and I'm really proud to bring this forward. As you heard on the call today, a public comment, our young people need a voice in our work. I think that there's a phrase we often use in the queer movement, which is, nothing about us without us. And so I really, really heard that call and really excited to welcome student, School Board Student Members. And so I'll let Vice President Hersi share more, too, and some more background, and then really would be happy to answer any questions. And I know Senior Legal Counsel Ronald Boye is also here to answer questions from directors.
Thank you, President DeWolff, or former President DeWolff, oh my gosh. Thank you, Director DeWolff, for your leadership on this. All I can say is, this is just yet another example of the amazing things that are possible when we get out of the way and authentically share power specifically with our youth. I listen and remember back to, you know, it's no surprise that this is during Black History Month, post celebrating Black Lives Matter at School Week, but one of the central demands is student representation of the Black Lives Matter at School Week movement. And we, when we set out to provide this opportunity and work with youth, one of the biggest things that we wanted to make sure it was that they were in the driver's seat for this policy from the very beginning. So the document that you are going to be considering in the next couple of weeks here is really, when we say organically grown from the youth, there, this is the prime example of that process. And I just want to extend a huge thank you and to just put as much sunlight as we possibly can on the students who worked with us on this policy, just because they did an amazing job in not only thinking through the really tough policy pieces when you're developing a program like this from the ground up, but then also being very thoughtful in making sure that they were acting as true representative for all of the students who were not in the room when this policy was being developed. So it was just a joy for me to be a part of and to witness, and I am incredibly excited about this measure and hope for its expedient passing.
And President, I'm just one more thing to add, which is that we are not the first district in the state to do this. So I think, if anything, we need to do this a lot sooner. And so I'm grateful that our students brought it to us now, and we should have done it sooner, because many districts in our state already have this policy on the books. So, thank you.
Okay, and then that takes us for comments or questions from Director Harris.
I'm in favor of this. I have some questions about the logistics in terms of how long meetings will last and whether or not our students will receive credit for their work and release time to participate in committee meetings that are held during school days, et cetera, et cetera. I also want to shout out to Teacher John Greenberg, who facilitated and arranged a Zoom meeting and PowerPoint with the NAACP Youth Council. And I have to say, it's one of the best run meetings that I think I've ever seen. And frankly, they make us, the school board and the school district, look like pikers. So I'm excited about this new energy. I'm excited about new ideas. I'm excited about hearing from students that are living our policies and giving us the unintended consequences in real time. I appreciate that this has come forward, and I thank the folks that sponsored this and guided it and grew it, and props to all concerned. Thank you.
Okay, and then Director Rivera Smith, I know you heard this in executive committee. Do you have additional questions and comments now? Director Rivera Smith? Oh, she's must have, okay, she must not be there. She said she had to leave after the action items. So that takes us to Director Rankin.
Huge thanks again to those who brought this forward. As one of our student speakers said during testimony, when decisions about students are being made, students should be included. I think this is great and overdue, and looking forward to seeing it progress and implemented.
Okay, and that just leaves me, I guess. So I think my questions are just follow up on questions from the executive committee session. I want to note that in addition to the youth who spoke here today, we actually had a large number of youth, Arina Matasia Walker Burr, Leah Scott, who were not, and there's probably others that I'm not remembering, but that didn't get a chance to speak tonight, and I hope we'll hear from them maybe at the next meeting, but that came to the committee, which was a critical point on this, and were very eloquent and clear and persuasive in their comments and their questions. And I couldn't be more thrilled that we brought this forward. I know, as Director Hersi said, you know, I remember being in, in August, I guess, when King County Equity Now had their Equity and Education Rally, and there was just a really, this clear set of demands provided by the youth at that event. And, and we were standing there looking through it going, oh, these are doable. And also things that I know Director DeWolff had already indicated interest in having student representation on the board. And it's true that it does in Portland and other, I believe in Portland, other locations, they have managed to accomplish this before now. And so I'm happy to, that we're finally at this, at this point. And then there's just the matter of the logistics. I want to give gratitude to our board office staff who supported this as well, as this also came through pretty quickly, and they provided some input and some critical, you know, questions. And so Director DeWolff, do you need your question, do you need to ask your question now before I ask mine, or? You're muted.
It doesn't have to be now, I just wanted to invite Ronald Boye, either before or after you, to just maybe do a quick overview for folks listening on the call of the policy.
Okay, yeah, I'll just tee it up for him probably with this comment and question. And my concern is really about making sure that there is fiscal preparation and structure and support to make sure that when the students come on, they are welcomed and supported, because they'll be doing this in concert with their, their schoolwork. And I think we absolutely want to make sure that any of the ways in which we might feel, you know, that we need a little more structure and support, we want to tee that up for, for students. And so I know there's been some conversation about that, and that's kind of my main question, is anything that's been updated about that since then? As I said, I know you've gotten some good feedback from staff, and this will take some work for us to get there, in terms of work internally, not because it's going to be over a long period of time, but because we need to make sure that we can actually staff this and support the students in their, their participation and do it effectively. So, and then I can hand it over to Ronald Boye, and then we come back from that, Director Rankin, I will go to your question.
President Hampson, this is Chief Legal Counsel Greg Narver. I just exchanged texts with Mr. Boye. He was having problems logging in. I've just sent him the link, so hopefully he'll be on any second now, but he was having a couple of problems accessing the meeting.
Okay, let me go to, do you want to answer anything on my question, or should I go to Director Rankin's question?
He's on now.
Oh, okay. Do you, why don't you go ahead and tee him up, Zachary? Yeah.
Yes, yes, thank you, President Hampson. Thank you, Ronald, for joining us. Basically, we had kind of gone through a round of questions from directors, set up the background, and really, again, just grateful for our students and really your work, too. And I was hoping if you could kind of quick, give a quick synopsis of the policy, just the high level, some of the main points about it, and if you wanted to just share any additional background about the process.
Yeah, I would be happy to. Ronald Boye, Senior General Counsel. This policy, I was really happy to be involved with. The students that brought this, this work forward were just really amazing to work with and so intelligent. And so often, when I work on a policy with anyone, a lot of things are forgotten as far as organizational concerns, and the students were on top of every little element that needed to be addressed. So basically, with this policy, obviously, only our elected officials will have voting power, as they currently do, but student school board members will provide a valuable advisory role to the board and be at the table where decisions are being made to provide student voice, student opinion, elevate concerns that they hear in their school. And basically, the way it will work is we'll start with three students who the board will select as school board members, student school board members. They will serve on the Student Services Curriculum and Instruction Committee. One will be assigned to operations, and one will be assigned to budget and finance. And they will be expected to attend each committee meeting, offer, you know, their input as far as the things that are on committee agenda. And then the idea is that there'll also be a standing agenda item at regular board meetings to provide comment. So they'll have an opportunity to provide feedback at the regular board meeting as to just what occurred at their committee, what they feel about the matters that are on the board's agenda for that day. And it's also kind of the idea that we know that board meetings do run very long at times. So it will provide the opportunity for them to have the opportunity to comment, and if they need to, obviously do homework or whatever else they have going in their lives, they don't necessarily have to stay for the full board meeting, but they would be present for all the committee meetings they're assigned to. And again, I think that this is a great opportunity. I know that in the work that I do, it's so valuable to hear from students. And honestly, we so often think that we know what a student would think about something, but then when we actually talk to a student, you know, it may be something completely different. So I just think this is such a great opportunity for the board to just have right there at their table, that student input. And I think that if passed, this would be a really valuable aspect to the board's work.
Thank you. And then, so my question had been about sort of structure and cost associated with the administration of this, and whether, if you could speak to any refinement of that. And I want to make sure, I'm also going to just caution that we are, we don't get into too much. And I want to make sure, I'm also going to just caution that we don't get into too much detail on anything, that we're only considering the changes associated with student addition to the board in terms of the committee's structure. We're not trying to open up any other Pandora's boxes on that. But, so any further comments or updates on that, kind of the fiscal analysis and the structure for what we're going to need to make sure that students are well-supported in doing this work?
Yeah, at this point, obviously, this will involve cost. What I would perceive to happen is that the committee liaisons, who manage the agenda and send out agendas and materials to board directors for meetings, they would add also the student onto that work and provide the committee information to the students as well. There will be some additional work on part of the board office, as well to get them materials that they need, make sure that they're invited to board meetings. And then I also believe that it's important that we have a staff member who meets with the students, probably on a weekly or, you know, bi-monthly basis, which also entails a cost. And, you know, unfortunately, I'm not, you know, a financial person. I am the attorney, so I don't know what that exact cost would be. But I would estimate at this point that it probably would realize an amount between, I don't know, five to $10,000 minimum for the bare minimum of these three students to support them. And if it was integrated into current roles that are currently staffed by the district.
Sorry, I was talking on mute. That's as an annual cost, correct?
Correct.
Yeah, okay. Okay, I don't have any additional questions. So, let's see, did we get through everybody? I guess it just. Oh, yeah, sorry, Director Rankin, you had a follow-up question.
Yeah, thanks. I was curious about the procedure part of it, and specifically, the credit or service hour, I don't want to call it compensation, but that sort of is, I guess, what's, when might we see that? And what are there other factors that you need? I'm totally supportive of that. I was going to ask if that was a possibility. And then, you know, when I read it, saw that it was a possibility. In fact, it was in there. But I'm just wondering what, if this, if anything else needs to happen to enable that assigning of credit or how that works?
You know, it's my understanding that, and I think I would let our curriculum instruction experts provide the exact answer on this, but it's my understanding to provide credit, there would need to be a teacher of record assigned in order to do that. I think that service hours are a likely easier route for this. But I also would have to say that because this is very new, I believe that at this point, our philosophy is that starting with three and really making the next year learning process and developing what the program can be, you know, through the process as we work through it. We'll also be developing procedures as we're working through the process and realizing what we need to do. And again, I think that a lot of this is really going to be led by students. And I think that this first group of students is really going to have to, you know, they will make it what it's going to be. So hopefully, if it is passed, we can select a great group of kids to really, to really kind of develop this with us and make it so that it works for them.
Cool, thank you. I'll just go on record as saying, being in support of credit-earning opportunities for this kind of hands-on experience in general. Especially, we have, you know, some different civics requirements coming up for students and, you know, participating in this kind of thing with, you know, there's a structure and guidelines and just a huge educational opportunity. And, you know, in addition for, obviously, benefit for us as a board of having the expertise of students, something that I would like, this and other similar things, just support the possibility of students earning, you know, being recognized as having taken on a significant amount of learning and expanded their education and recognizing that with credit-earning opportunities. So, thanks.
Yeah. And I think I'll look into that more in the next few weeks per to Action. And I can provide an update up then.
Okay.
Thank you.
That takes us to our, that's everybody, right? That takes us to our next action item? I'm sorry, intro item, approval of guiding principles for the Buildings Technology and Academic/Athletics BTA V capital levy. This came through Ops on February 4th, or recommended for approval. Director DeWolf is sponsoring this item and will be providing the briefing.
Awesome, thank you, President Hampson. I think, just for clarity, Chief Podesta, I'm pretty sure we put this through his consideration. So I wonder if you could just kind of check the background? We have it here as approval, but I thought we did consideration. So I'll just, if somebody could kind of clarify that for me. But each levy cycle, one of the important documents we try to produce is a guiding principles document for our Capital Projects folks to use in community and really to help guide the process for development of the projects, prioritization, and just as a way to understand kind of the values and the principles that the board wants to ensure are part of the process. This, I was given the BTA V guiding principles at the end of 2020. The former director, who was the Ops Chair within that transition, I was able to take on the responsibility of the BTA V guiding principles. And we delayed it by just a month because I wanted to do some additional outreach to our partners at SCA, the Principal Association of CL Schools, CL Council, PTSA, and then NAACP Youth Coalition. And heard back from everyone, and I just want to, again, raise my hands up to all those folks who supported this effort. The document that you see here is actually not only created by this board, so thank you to the board for participating in that process so passionately, but also to thank you to the community for being part of this process as well. And just want to name, the document that you're seeing today is a real collaboration between all of us. I really wanted to make sure it felt like we were all part of this effort. And I want to just, again, call out our young people and our students, particularly from the NAACP Youth Coalition. One of the great suggestions they had was to add an additional line under each of the principles called, just titled "Result." And so each of the guiding principles has background about what the guiding principle is, and then a result that basically outlines if we put out this principle, what result do we need to see? And so as you can see in the document, there are results on each of the guiding principles. And if directors have any feedback on those, please let us know between now and Action. And I'll turn it over to President Hampson for questions and comments from directors. But again, just thank you to SCA, PAS, and NAACP Youth Coalition, and CL Council, PTSA, and our board directors for really creating this really rich and meaningful document for our BTA V process.
Okay, we'll go to directors for comments and questions. And Director Hersi?
No comments or questions from me. Excited to move forward.
Director Harris?
Thank you for this, Director DeWolf. I'm very pleased to see that we're doing guiding principles, much like we did for BEX V, that slowed us down some, but I think made a very big difference in terms of equity concerns. Appreciate your hard work. Thank you.
Director Rankin?
Just second what Director Harris just said. Big appreciation to Director DeWolf for taking the time to engage with various stakeholders, get their input, and also to staff for allowing the breathing space that required, was required for that to happen.
And then that goes to me. So I think, thank you, Director DeWolf, for leading a very inclusive process to get this revised in a shockingly short period of time. I'm not exactly sure how you got so many people to give so much feedback on a written document because it is always tough. So just, my only question, I think, is about, did this resonate well with staff in getting it back? Did they see how they can, you know, implement this effectively?
Yeah, I will, you know, anecdotally, Richard Best from our Capital Projects team talks about the immense importance that this document held in the BEX V process. So they came with a lot of enthusiasm about what this could mean for BTA V process. And like I said, I asked them for a delay so I could, you know, make sure we had the right stakeholders giving input. And I feel very confident that they, where we landed, our Capital Projects team will be able to work with it really well. And I think one thing I've heard from folks was just, as a small example, I know I've already said this before, but just adding in a result, it's kind of this results-based or outcomes-based process. And I think that is a real shining moment on this whole document. And I hope we get to use that in other documents. And I know that our Capital Projects team will be able to take this and use this in a really productive, effective, and constructive way for BTA V process.
Yeah, I appreciate that in particular of it, and that it starts to drive towards student-outcomes-focused place, which is where we really need to be headed as a board and as an institution. So, yeah, I don't have any further questions. And I know it's been a good evolution with all of this work. So thank you for continuing to push it forward. Okay. We will now move to introduction item number three, approval to rename Northgate Elementary to James Baldwin Academy. This came through Ops on February 4th for consideration. Chief Operations Officer Fred Podesta, I believe you will be briefing us.
Yes, thank you, President Hampson. This came to operations, as you said, on February 4th. And we heard a very impactful presentation from Principal Dee Dee Fontleroy and family support worker Guillermo Carvahal, who have led the efforts and are at this meeting. So I may ask them to expand on my comments a little bit. The, there is BEX V project to replace the Northgate building. And so the principal and staff are seizing on this opportunity to use the renaming of the school to continue to build a community and identity for the school. As part of our capital projects, we engage a school design advisory committee, which helps advise the project going forward. And that committee took note of the resolution the board adopted last June that committed to inclusion for LGBTQIA+ community and specifically called out naming a school for a member of that community as a supportive action and felt that there was a great intersection of their goal for an identity for the school and the board's intent. And stay, as you see in the bar, they feel that honoring James Baldwin in particular is perfect for their community because their community is passionate about literacy, literature, learning, critical debate, diplomacy, and social justice. And that they would see that this action would demonstrate a commitment to social justice, unconditional love for the school community, and speaking truth to power. And so I will ask Principal Fontleroy and Guillermo Carvahal if they would like to add any comments, since they're here with us tonight and have written the best bar I think I've ever had the opportunity to bring to you in terms of just the passion that flows through it.
And I will happily hand it over to our family support worker Guillermo Carvahal because he's the one who wrote it, just sort of cut and paste. So go ahead, Guillermo, this is fantastic work.
Well, hi, do you guys hear me?
Yes, we do.
Do you guys hear me?
Yeah.
All right, thanks. All right, I'm on the phone, that's why. Well, anyway, thank you very much for the opportunity to try to make this a more equitable society. And I know Seattle is in the forefront of trying to make things work for everybody. And the leadership that my principal Dee Dee and others have shown in regards to how to make a community better. And our hope and dreams and desires is to really excel academically. And one of the ways you excel academically is by showing your kids that there are people like them doing phenomenal work despite whatever struggles and barriers they have. And I think that James Bowen is a model citizen for what we believe in, which is still truth to power. Education is foremost. Understand that this world will always be struggles, but as long as we have dreams and visions and desires to succeed, we will make it happen. And I think that our school emphasizes that every single day. And the composition of a school also dictates that. And the desire to make this world even better just adds more flavor to it. So I won't say anymore, just the fact that I love the idea of having James Bowen's name on our school to emphasize education, literacy, diplomacy, civil rights, social justice, and I can just go on because he was a person of many accomplishments. So thank you for putting this on the table, and let's hope for the best.
Yeah, and I would just add that Guillermo has done most of the work for this. This really shows that, you know, if you let people, if you let your staff work to their strengths, they just do amazing things. And I'm a real believer in blowing up that hierarchy of, you know, that is in schools now that is racist and keeps people back. So I really appreciate that at Northgate, we work like a family, and nobody's the head, really. We all pull together and use our myriad of talents. Yeah, did you want to say something?
May I say one more thing before I go? Yes, I also want to emphasize, and this is really important to me on a personal level. I am Spanish. I came here as an immigrant, and I'm very fortunate to have papers and area to be here. But I also want to let the communities know, all of the communities that I work in behalf of, that despite the fact that I am Spanish, I care, respect, and hope to support any community in the margins and in our communities, in our neighborhoods. I believe that it's an example that even though you're not part of a community, you could still step up and work in behalf of those communities. And I think that's crucial that we all realize that because it's a black community, it's not a black problem. It's a Spanish, it's a white, it's an Asian, it's a Native American issue. And that we always need to step up no matter what. And I want to be an example, and I want the school to be an example of what? Diversity, inclusion is for all communities, no matter what gender, et cetera. You can go on and on and on. But I want to make that very clear, that it's very important to me that you don't have to be for one community to support another. Thank you.
Thanks, Guillermo. And I'll add two other things. One is that I think, I hope that you are taking a really good look at what Northgate is doing with this new building. We are putting equity at the center. We are making it actionable. We are talking about our, I mean, just for one example, we will have gender-neutral restrooms. We will have a color scheme that is designed around a black woman artist. Where it's amazing how we've pulled along as we are learning alongside our architects and our construction contractor. pulled along as we are learning alongside our architects and our construction contractor. We are, we're not doing it perfectly, but we can start providing a template for how this can be done in every school. And the second thing I will mention, if Director Rankin gives me the, the space to do so, I just, I want to acknowledge that for some reason, the word academy is a vis, has a visceral, I don't know what to it. And we were finding that happened especially for our, our white community members. And we put it there because it sounded cool, and that was Guillermo's idea, and I thought it was awesome. But we, we dug a little bit deeper after hearing it a couple of times. And we asked people to reflect on why this is, why this is so, why this word is, is problematic. And people gave us some really good, some really good reflections on it. I really appreciate our white community members who were able to honestly reflect on that. And honestly, we don't want anything to get in the way of the name James Baldwin. We don't want any kind of icky taste in anybody's mouth around one word. So we are fine to let it go. It is not something that was generated, it was something that was presented to the community as a possibility, but we are not married to that particular word. Elementary is just fine. We want to highlight James Baldwin. And if that word gets in the way, we're letting, we're ready to let it go.
Okay, thank you so much Principal Fontleroy and Guillermo Carvahal, if I'm saying that correctly, for being here. That was inspiring. And I'm, my, my spirits are lifted, hearing you talk and, and reading the, the bar. It's incredible to, to see you all represented directly in this way in this bar, and I so appreciate it. So thank you to all of the gatekeepers that stepped away and let this happen from the school communities, because it's, it's really incredible. So let's see, with that, Director DeWolfe, did you have anything else to add? Or can I go ahead to other directors for questions?
Just, just a couple of small points. One is just thank you so much Guillermo and DeeDee for, for this. This is a true example of community just galvanizing around an idea, working with it. And I think not only did you come up with a really great product and a result, but I know that you, you had an opportunity to build community in the process. And so those are two really wonderful things, and I'm so grateful. You're a part of Seattle Public Schools. I, I think I just want to underline a point that Principal Fontleroy made, which is that I would love to hear from directors as we go around, if people feel comfortable. Obviously, what is presented today was a bar for being renamed to James Baldwin Academy. But just let us know if, if you're comfortable, if we revise it to elementary between introduction today and action. And I just want to do one final point around James Bal, James Arthur Baldwin. James Arthur Baldwin was an openly queer, black scholar, public intellectual, and civil rights figure who became one of the country's most son after commentators on social politics. I, you know, when I heard this, this proposal come through from Guillermo and Principal Fontleroy, I, I was so just jazzed and excited because it really spoke to exactly what I was hoping for from our LGBTQI plus resolution from last June. And so I'm really, really, really excited to see this through. And thank you for the opportunity to work with you Guillermo and Principal Fontleroy on this. And I'll turn it back to President Hampson for questions or comments.
Okay, Director Hersi.
Thank you very much. Oh, let me get my camera. So James Baldwin is a personal hero of mine. And it's a shame that I didn't learn about him until I was in college, right? And so the opportunity that is before us to name a school after one of the most prolific African-American figures our, our history has to offer is obviously incredibly exciting. I just want to say thank you to all the work that's gone into this. I know that this was no small feat. And what I would really like to see as we move forward is continuing to assess the names of many schools, especially here in the South End and in the Central District, that need to have new opportunities for folks who we can all be proud of to have their names adorned these buildings. So my only ask would be, at some phase after we take action tonight, I would love to meet and talk about the process that y'all went through so that we can replicate that on a larger scale for our other buildings, that it's long past time that we get some new names on there. So again, just endless appreciation for all the work that's gone in, and I'm excited to move forward.
Thank you. I'm going to go now to Director Rankin, since this is her district. She'll give me that. Director Harris, I'll go to you next. Director Rankin?
Thanks. And thank you to DeeDee and Guillermo for, for being here tonight and for being truly just wonderful partners and collaborators. And it's been such a pleasure to be a very small part of this important project, both in the naming and in the rebuilding. The way, as Principal DeeDee said, serving as a model, that this can serve as a model for how we go about news, you know, big changes as buildings, names, all of that with community at the heart. I know we've heard some, some testimony and gotten some emails at the board from neighbors who are concerned about loss of playing field space and some other things. And I'm, I'm happy to continue to answer those questions as I can. I did meet with Chief Podesta and Richard Best to, to give, reiterate for me the information that I need to answer questions for community. And, you know, a big change right in your backyard is, is tough for people, and that period of construction is, is disruptive for various reasons. I truly believe that what's been designed is so centered on the needs of the students and the neighborhood, that I truly believe when all is said and done, everyone will be so thrilled. And so I'm happy to continue conversations with anybody listening who still has questions. Because, you know, it's, it's, this is something I think that the whole community can be just really, really proud of. I have had the pleasure of having my child have soccer practice on that field. And it's, 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 you know, the new school is going to be built where the field is now.
Sorry, Director Rankin?
It's naming, I'm getting off into a whole, yeah.
Do you, yeah, get back to the topic. If you want to talk about academy or, but otherwise, we need to keep moving.
Okay. No, the main thing is what has been so clear through the naming process and the building process is how much student and family voice has been at the center. And the choosing the name of James Baldwin is really the, the pinnacle of that, that it came with such support from the school community and represents so many things that, that the Northgate community wants everyone else, wants to, to say about themselves and wants everyone else to know about them is so wonderful. And in terms of elementary versus academy, at the, at our committee meeting where this came forward, I was a white person who had a sort of distasteful response to the word academy. And, and, you know, wondered why academy and not elementary. And we had a good conversation about that. And, you know, I acknowledge that if it's just, just me personally, it's not something that I'm gonna, you know, draw a line in the sand about. And then in, in sort of individually letting directors know that this was going to come up and how people felt, the consensus seemed to be that keeping elementary consistent with the other K5s in our system was preferable. So I just, you know, appreciate everybody for being part of that process. And, and I'm just really grateful and happy that, I just love the Northgate community, soon to be the Baldwin community. I'll just end it there.
Okay, thank you, Director Harris.
Thank you, Madam President. First of all, props for what Principal Fontleroy had to say in terms of getting out of staff people's way and letting them rise to shine and the concept of teamwork. That's my definition of leadership, not hierarchical. And I so appreciate that. With the question of academy versus elementary, I would like to see us have consistency, elementary and middle school, K through five schools, etc. Academy gives me some trigger warnings to corporate deformed policies and nomenclature that, that frankly distressed me greatly. It's, it's like talking about our students as scholars and our schools as campuses and our schools as academies. And it, it's, it, it feels like charter school, corporate deformed language to me. And I'd like to see us keep that consistency. And I so, so appreciate Principal Fontleroy giving us space to give that feedback. Appreciate. Thank you.
Okay, I think that leaves me. I won't, I've already said a couple of things, so I would just go straight to the point of whether or not I think academy is, is problematic. And even though I think it's, it's one of those things that I, that I do hear that is problematic for folks. And, and I, as, as you both stated, DeeDee and Guillermo, so while we wouldn't want anything to get in the way of that. And, and I do feel like having elementary afterwards better highlights, it being about James Baldwin. I don't have any specific or good rationale for why it's academy. For me, it actually sounds more like, I associate it with the military, actually. And so that's the only, and that's not necessarily negative, it's just a different context is, is how I think of academy. So other than that, I'm just so grateful again to this work. Another good, good item in a exciting meeting. So with that, I think we'll get to the next item, unless you want to add anything else, Director DeWolfe.
No, just that I would be really grateful for Guillermo and Principal Fontleroy to join us at our next meeting, just in, as we'll be voting on it next time. I'd be happy to have them, so we can celebrate. Thanks.
We will be there.
Okay, we will now move forward to introduction item number four, Cleveland High School Memorial Forest Conservation Easement Agreement with King County and Memorandum of Understanding with the Cleveland High School Alumni Association. This came through Ops on February 4th for approval. Exciting meeting, that one. Okay, Chief Podesta, I believe you'll be briefing us again.
Yes, thank you President Hampson. Cleveland High School Memorial Forest is 133 acres northeast of Issaquah that was donated to the district by students in 1944. The intent of the donation was to create a perpetual memorial to Cleveland students who had lost their lives in World War II. In the past couple of years, there's been discussions going on, and King County approached the district about, they have a very ambitious land conservation program. And they approached the district with an unsolicited offer to acquire a conservation and trail easement and compensate the district $3.47 million for that easement. And a conservation easement is an agreement between two parties, the grantor and the grantee, that limits the ability of the property owner to develop the property. We have talked about this informally at times, and sometimes have used the language that this, this would be a sale of property right, of development rights. That's not exactly accurate, because what the conservation easement does is it limit anybody's ability to develop the property. So King County would not be buying rights to develop this property. We would remain owners of the property. There would be prohibitions that are consistent with the goal of the donors to the district that this stay in perpetuity of forest. And the, this transaction is very strongly supported by the Cleveland High School Alumni Association. Vice President John Barton joined us at the operations committee meeting to, to speak on his behalf. And the Alumni Association really values the certainty that this provides, that this will forever remain a forest. In the, the way the transaction is structured, we retain, the district would retain 10 acres where we would, we keep our development rights. And at the current time, those 10 acres, there is a memorial, there are restrooms, there's a small lyceum, a caretaker building, and a shed for garden tools. And the action also calls for a memorandum of understanding with the Alumni Association, that we develop a joint working group, that we consider earmarking $150,000 of the proceeds of this sale to rebuild that lyceum to allow some wet weather protection for events at, at the site. It maintains the, the annual Memorial Day event, which is held there now, and, and just calls for that to continue. And then also suggests that the district conduct a forest management study about the, the total acreage. There's also a trail easement built into this. One of the reasons this is a really good site for the county's conservation program is our property is surrounded by other open green space. And so the easement would allow the county to build a trail, which the design would be, need to be approved by the district to allow non-motorized traffic between the various green spaces and through our property to connect that space. So people can traverse from one park or through our property to the other. And so that would conclude my remarks. Be happy to take any questions. This seems like if you look up win-win in the dictionary, this transaction would be there.
Thank you. Director DeWolfe, to you.
Yeah, thanks President Hampson. I guess this feels like a, an extra operations committee if there's so many of our items today. Thank you Chief Podesta for the background. I actually think it's a win-win-win. I think, just to clarify, this is a win for alumni. They get, you know, the space will be maintained as a memorial for our Cleveland High School students from World War II. The county gets to continue their commitment to their climate goals. You know, trees are a really important and critical carbon sequestration tool, and we need to reduce our greenhouse gas emissions. And then it's just a win for us because the county's paying us $3.47 million. And so I, I see it as a win-win-win. And I'm just really grateful for your, your work on this, Chief Podesta. And I just want to elevate some of the groups that sent in letters in support, the American Legion, Veterans of Foreign Wars, Daughters of American Revolution, the American Ex Prisoners of War, National Association of Black Veterans, Sons of Union Vets, the Marine Corps League, and World War II Museum. So just really broad support. And so I'm just really grateful to see this. And I'll let you move it on to the next director. Thanks President Hampson.
Director Hersi.
Definitely a win-win on top of win, especially in the moment that we are in right now, given everything that we have been discussing in relation to our budget, and an opportunity to ensure that the land is preserved in a significant way. I think that this is, I wish we had more opportunities like this, where we could do good work and also provide resources for our students at the same time. So super excited about it. Thank you for the presentation and all the work that's gone into this.
Director Harris?
Speaking as a proud Cleveland graduate, I think this is a win. I don't know how many we can stack up, but, but it's all valid. I get the alumni, alumni newsletter every month. And the folks that help make this happen are the best kind of folks. And they're still connected with us after decades. And to Mr. Jackins and his public testimony, we're not selling anything, we're preserving. Thank you.
Director Rankin?
I, I feel like we, I've been in so many different conversations about this project. I was surprised that it was introduction. I was thinking surely it had to be action. But yeah, no, I think as Chief Podesta said, it's a win-win. And we had overwhelming Um, we had overwhelming support from, uh, the Alumni Association and from other organizations that support, um, uh, veterans and support conservation efforts. And, um, as Director Harris said, uh, preserving this, um, preserving this land going forward is fantastic and I can't wait to vote on it next time.
Okay, um, and again, Director Rose Smith is not here. I'm not, I'm not leaving her out. Um, but, uh, yeah, and I, I will say, um, really happy to see that this was realized. I, um, it was an exciting proposition when it was originally brought to us. And, um, and so I'm grateful that you were able to work this out. And, um, yes, we're not giving up any assets. This, as Director Harris said, this is, um, we, we get to maintain that. This is an, an easement and a really, um, incredible solution. Um, thank you to, um, those Cleveland High School students back in the day. And, um, I will probably be recommending that we put this on the consent agenda because I think we've all, um, have plenty of good positive things to say about it. So, um, with that, um, we will move to the next agenda item, which is the Memorandum of Agreement, um, between the City of Seattle. Let's make sure I'm reading the right words. Um, sorry, um, Building Excellence, this is item number five, Building Excellence, Specs 5 Memorandum of Agreement between City of Seattle and Seattle Public Schools regarding the Student and Community Workforce Agreement. This came through Ops on February 4th for approval. Chief Podesta, I will be, I believe you will be briefing us and then you'll take it, um, over Director DeWolff.
Uh, thanks again. Um, the Board approved a Student and Community Workforce Agreement in September of last year. And this agreement was negotiated between the District and the Seattle Building and Construction Trades Council. And the point of the agreement, you'll recall, is to support construction trade careers for, uh, Seattle Public School students and allows for prioritizing the hire of, uh, district affiliated workers on, um, covered projects, on projects of 5 million or greater, um, the construction projects that are undertaken by the district. And it has ancillary goals of, you know, advancing, advancing equity in work and also in contracting opportunities. Uh, the agreement establishes, uh, working conditions at job sites. Um, and it, there are many facets to it and its companion goals that require administration and monitoring. As directed by the Board, when we negotiated this agreement with the trades, we modeled it on the City of Seattle's existing agreement that had been in place since 2016. And, um, felt that because of, we, the district doesn't have much direct experience administering such an agreement, that it would make sense at the outset, um, to contract with the city to help us. Since it's, our agreements are very similar. Um, they have a team of more than 10 people that administers, um, their agreement, of course, across multiple capital programs for utilities and transportation and, and other departments. Um, but they have a lot of experience. They have, um, relationship with the trades and, um, some of our contractors as well and can jumpstart us, um, being able to manage this agreement well and go beyond things that are just in the agreement to, um, uh, help our monitoring and, and administration of complementary programs, monitoring for prevailing wage, apprenticeship utilization, outreach to women and minority-owned business enterprises, which are also our companion goals to actually implementing the agreement and, uh, um, and the support for our students in the construction trades. Um, so the agreement itself calls for two full-time staff with backgrounds in this issue and management support who will be, um, whenever we determine what that means, a lot of this work is done in the field, but, um, though this, we intend for these students to be co-located with our capital team once we see what the future of co-location with anybody means. But, um, we will have direct, um, access to these workers. Will be part of our team and will help teach us how to administer this agreement. Um, and we'll also, uh, examine how we're partnering, um, the potential for a future partnership with the city since, again, um, we share many relationships with labor and we've modeled our agreement on theirs. So we really want to leverage their experience. This will be a great way, um, to hit the ground running on this agreement as we have covered projects, um, that we're working on this year. And with that, I will conclude my remarks and happy to take any questions.
Go ahead, Director DeWolff.
Thank you, President Hampton. Um, just thank you to, uh, Chief Podesta for your work on this. And just as context for Board, uh, Directors, um, last year, we approved the Student and Community Workforce Agreement. Uh, and this is kind of a next, in, in following up and ensuring we're investing in the work that's going to go into, uh, monitoring and evaluating and improving and refining our Student and Community Workforce Agreement and making sure we're aligned to that agreement. And so, um, I can't remember where Chief Podesta, but there was a number, I think we had described in our Operations Committee meeting, that in 2021, I think the total amount for projects, $400 million. So this $455,000 really, um, represents about 0.11% of the, of the total expenses, um, for, for X5 projects. So that's, that seems like we're getting a pretty great deal for, for the amount of, um, work that will go into, to making sure that our SCWA is being, um, implemented appropriately. I don't have anything other to, to say other than, um, I'm just really excited to finally see this through. This is that kind of last final step. And so, um, just thank you for all your work.
Uh, Director Hersi.
Uh, no questions or comments from me at this time. Thank you.
Director Harris? Director Harris? I will circle back around. Director, uh, Rankin?
Uh, I don't have any questions. Thank you.
Um, and then my, uh, only question is, it, assuming that this is successful, and it, it seems to me that this, um, it, I would be really excited to see kind of a return on investment out of this. Um, and I don't know if there's any plans to do that or, um, if there's any way to kind of tickle that as a, to create a, a plan to do that. But, um, by tickle, I mean set up as a, um, as a reminder, um, a tickler. Uh, so, because I think it's a relatively small amount of investment for what I hope will be a, a strong, um, student outcome. And so, um, any kind of idea or prospects of what that might look like or how we could support that as a board?
I think the indicators that we intend to look at are the placement of students, you know, students, former students or otherwise district affiliated workers on our projects. Um, we have relied on, for apprenticeship utilization, really have relied on our contractual controls and our contractors to do that work. This gives us kind of direct, um, uh, monitoring and observation of how, um, apprenticeship apprentices are utilized on our contracts. So, we will, you know, have, be able to, um, uh, verify those numbers and look for greater opportunities. So we would expect to see hopefully our contract utilization increase or if, um, the numbers that are provided by contractors, if there are questions raised about them, that we can have those meaningful discussions. And then this will also allow us to lean in more than we're able to now, to, uh, do outreach to, uh, minority and women-owned, uh, contractors and subcontractors because they'll have dedicated staff that work on that. And then also will be part, you know, at least have a relationship. While we'll manage these staff directly, we'll have a relationship with the much larger city team. Um, so we're hoping that we can leverage that. So we should, um, see participation, um, by women and minority contractors increase on our projects. And so, those are the things we're going to be looking for. And, um, this model of working together on this might be the right, you know, cost aside, might be the way, way to do this permanently just because we, um, have access, um, to, uh, resources of the city. And the city does a lot of, we do probably more vertical, more building construction than the city, but they do more of everything else. And so this hopefully can be a very rich partnership. Certainly we got support from the city in the development and the community workforce agreement. And again, we can also leverage our relationships with labor. So, um, but again, I think this is one of those things that should produce actual quantifiable outcomes.
Okay, um, and that, yeah, and, and then I guess we'll also, in, in my mind, and you can correct me at some future date, um, about, um, if it's not appropriate, but this goes in the kind of, um, category of ways in which we have resources or funds going back and forth between the City of Seattle where there's, you know, public benefit and, um, the extent to which we are able to share resources and, um, services and that benefits the community. Uh, and this is yet another one that is, that is going into that, um, quiver, as it were, although we're, we're, you know, paying for this. Um, but, um, I think that we have some rich conversations in our future about that relationship and how we can maximize those, um, the use of our respective resources. So, and I'm surprised that we do more building than the city.
Uh, again, we, we're more about buildings than they are, you know, the, uh, in, on any given year, parks. And their, um, facilities department does, um, some, but we probably have a larger construction budget devoted to the kinds of buildings we build, certainly. And, you know, they have a much larger capital program when it comes to roads and, um, uh, power lines and other types of work. But, um, so we can, uh, this will be a complimentary program for them.
All right. Thank you. Um, Director Harris? Did, did we just lose her altogether? Oh.
I got cut off on that.
Okay.
I appreciate it. Uh, I've got a couple of questions if I might, for, um, Chief Podesta. This is a five-year contract, is that correct?
Um, it's a five-year agreement. Uh, the SCWA is a, a five-year agreement and yes, the MOA as well.
Okay, and then I see that in community engagement, it's tier-two consultant involved. So it hasn't been successfully done to talk about this to folks. Can you expand on that, please?
Um, talk about the partnership with the city.
What have you done to engage community engagement?
Um, we conducted a, we led a task force, a board task force, um, um, for a few months to build the, um, Student and Community Workforce Agreement. And then, um, the ultimate design of the agreement was a result of recommendations of that task force. With regard to the.
I, I just didn't recall that in the agreement when we passed the resolution, which I could not be more highly supportive of and will forever be grateful to Directors DeWolff and, uh, former Director Burke and, uh, the trades folks. But, but I'm not sure I understand why this is a five-year agreement as opposed to say a two or three and then do a look back to see what's working. If, if the Seattle Public Schools had as many folks working on things like the FTE levy, we'd be in a heck of a lot better shape. They've got more bodies, uh, per capita than SPS does. And I'm concerned about the overhead and carrying costs, quite frankly.
Yes, we are, you know, we will, uh, again, continue to assess, um, this. We, uh, we do have, again, 180-day option to terminate. Um, given the, the number of resources relative to the size of our respective capital programs that the, um, city has versus us, I think we'll be getting far more than, um, two FTEs worth of value from this agreement. But that's really what we want, um, want to see. If, if this partnership for the long haul makes sense because, um, this, uh, this team, um, will have access to resources in the city and will be able to lean into relationships that we have had difficulty staffing, um, at the district.
Would you, would you be adverse to scheduling that on an annual basis to analyze with the Board of Directors?
No, I think it would make sense, um, uh, I think around milestones, around projects because we'll really be tallying up the results as, yeah, as projects enter kind of a closing phase. But certainly, you know, roughly annually or, and regularly, um, I, we need to, and the, um, Student and Community Workforce Agreement itself calls for a two-year review because, uh, they're, they're.
Add that into the resolution, sir? And or send it over to the Oversight Committee for their feedback? Because quite frankly, they were fairly negative about the workforce agreement. And I, and I think it's important that we listen.
That's not true.
Fair enough. I think we have a difference of opinion.
So.
But would you be adverse to adding that to the resolution?
Just for clarity, two people from that Oversight Group wrote a letter. That does not represent the full group. So just want to be clear about what that, what you're trying to say. Go ahead, Chief Podesta.
Um, so, I mean, we can add that langu, we could add, um, language into this Board Action Report about this, uh, student, uh, about this MOA with the city that I think, um, since we are calling for a two-year review of the Student and Community Workforce Agreement, acknowledging that our approach to administering the agreement should be something we look into, including is partnering with the city, you know, as a third-party administrator, you know, helpful or not. Um, and that would give us a way to consider, you know, are we going to continue this partnership or not? Um, and, you know, what are the advantages and disadvantages?
Thank you. The other piece that I am especially, excuse me, I'm speaking. The other piece that I am especially happy about here is the fact that frankly, I don't think Seattle Public Schools has done a good job of soliciting and engaging with minority and women-owned business enterprises because of lack of the antlers. I hope to see us do much better. Thank you.
Yeah, we, we do as well. And that's why explicitly, um, resources are allocated for that that are over and above really administering the Community Workforce Agreement. Um, the city's performance in, um, attracting minority and bus, and women-owned businesses to its construction projects, um, far exceeds what the district does, um, at, at this level. So, we're, we're really hoping to leverage a program that exists. And that's all about, um, relationships. And so, again, I think this is a way, this is a very efficient way, um, um, to ramp up our efforts, uh, in that regard.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Director Harris. Um, I'm going to move on to Director Rankin.
I think you already, you already came to me. I'm good.
Oh, oh, sorry, I forgot. I was coming back. Okay. Um, I would just say, um, uh, I, I just wanted to add there at the end. Uh, I want to, um, challenge our directors to make sure that when we ask for staff to provide additional, you know, feedback or work, that, but that everything that we're doing really needs to be focused on student outcomes. I think there's some really critical student outcomes-related impacts that are associated with this work. And I'm so grateful to everybody that has worked on this and the support from, from the Board. Um, and that, that we want to make sure that that is in fact, um, the, the feedback that we're asking, um, staff to give, um, uh, in terms of, of how impactful this, this is. So, um, with that, I think we're going to move to, um, the next item. The request for the, I don't know, um, uh, direct, or Chief Podesta and, uh, Chief Narver, if we can combine these next two that are both furniture procurement or?
They're, they're virtually identical actions. They cover just some different set of contracts with, uh, some of the same vendors, actually. They're just separated because they were around two separate sets of bids. Um, we bid our, uh, variety of furniture contracts. It mostly supports our capital program as we add classrooms and, um, other spaces. We need furnitures, fixtures and equipment. And, um, these contracts were bid in 2018 with the original three-year term and an option to extend the contracts a year. And both, um, items six and seven exercise that option to extend these contracts one year. I didn't let, um, Chief Counsel Narver ask. I didn't let Chief Counsel Narver ask whether we can gang these things together, but they are almost word for word the same bar.
Yeah, I'm not sure we're officially combining them, but the presentation is going to sound awfully similar on both, so I think it's six of one, half dozen of another.
Okay, well, just for the record, this is Recommendation to Extend Contract Terms and Amend Contract Amounts for Furniture Procurement for the 2021-22 year bid number B01834, and Recommendation to Extend Contract Terms and Amend Contract Amounts for Furniture Procurement for 2021 to 22 bid number B05866. So, take it away, Chief Podesta, with any additional comments, and then Director DeWolfe will comment first.
No, and again, it's pretty straightforward. We're exercising an option to continue a contract that allows us to buy furniture that with a number of, it's a number of contracts with a number of vendors that were done around this bid, B01834, in the spring of 2018.
Okay, Director DeWolfe.
President Hampson, thank you. I have no further questions or comments, other than to say that in Operations Committee, we passed this for approval to the full Board at a vote of three to zero for both. So, feel very confident. We, we talked about this enough there, and then look forward to voting on this at our, at our next meeting.
Director Hersi.
No comments from me either. Thank you.
Director Harris?
I'm good. Thank you.
Director Rankin?
No questions. Thanks.
I just have one question. Well, I guess it's a two-part question. One, what is, is there anything with these providers that allow us to send furniture back for storage for, we have to socially distance?
Not typically, you know, the, the most of the items are not locally sourced where there's a, like a local warehouse. And so, that's why we have a capital warehouse, because their lead time on these things are long and we fill up a warehouse as our capital program proceeds to have the furniture ready on the day that we need it, and these products are built all around North America and other parts of the world.
Capital warehouse, the last place that I was supposed to tour before, before COVID hit and didn't get to. So, someday I'll get there. Okay, I don't have any additional questions. So, I think that brings us to the end of the introduction items. And we now come to the Board Comments section of the agenda, and we are going to start with Director Hersi.
Hello. Thank you very much. I will keep my comments very brief tonight. Again, just a huge thank you to all of our educators, all of our nutrition services workers, our bus drivers, senior staff, all of our John Stanford Center staff. This past week has definitely been one that has tested a lot of us in so many ways, and I just want to appreciate everybody's resilience that even though there are many challenges that at this moment might seem insurmountable, that as long as we stay focused and committed to our children and providing what they need, that I believe strongly that we will end up in a place better than where we started. So, in terms of board comments and things of that nature, just a huge thank you to the District Seven Group. As always, I will always continue to shout out those individuals who show up every Tuesday and really sink our teeth into all of the equity issues facing our specific region. Huge shout out to the NAACP Youth Council, who especially over the past month to six weeks, has been deep in engagement with us, not only in preparing for our selection of Director Mack's successor, but also our policy on adding student board members and just so many other things. They, you know, as students, they give so much of their time volunteering, quite frankly, when they could be out doing other things, or, you know, rather inside doing other things. And I, I just remain in awe of all of the context and all of the information that they provide in terms of making sure that we're making a system that is not only equitable but sustainable for them and their classmates. So, again, for all of those who are out there watching from home, who, who see us at the top end of the system struggle and work incredibly hard to figure out what next steps are going to look like. I know that from your perspective and from the perspective of so many other folks in our system, you know, it, it appears as though Seattle Public Schools just can't get its act together in that, you know, people often ask the question, what makes us so special or what makes us so unique? And I think that the, the very clear answer for that is that we are the largest district in the state. We are the most urban district in this state. When we are trying to come to an agreement with our Education Association that represents the largest contingency of educators in this state, those things take time. And we have to make sure that we as Seattle, as the leader of, in so many ways, maybe we are not arriving at this place first, but we need to do everything that we can to arrive at a place right. And so, as we push forward and we continue to negotiate with our educators, the focus has to remain on children and making sure that when we do this, we are getting this right. So, please, I know that for many of you out there, that online learning is not working. We hear that loud and clear. But I want to make sure that before we bring students back to these physical buildings, that not only our educators, but also our students and their families are feeling ready, feeling like they have the information that they need, and feeling like they are sending their student into a situation to where they do not have to worry about transmission or violence or you name it. So, as we continue to push forward to that goal in good faith with our labor partners at various phases, I, this is one of the most important times because as we move forward to trying to figure out what does it look like for us to return, we have to get this right. So, your patience is appreciated. Continue to engage with us. Do not let up on sending us emails. Those are always opportunities for us to learn more about your varied and individual experiences and opportunities for us to take those experiences to the bargaining table as we try to reach a, a fair agreement and contract for our educators. So, I'll leave it at that. Thank you all. I hope all of your families are doing well and you're remaining safe, and please, continue to take care.
Thank you, Director Hersi, and you are up, Director Harris.
Fabulous. I didn't know that you changed it around by the first names. Well, way to go. Thank you. I'm going to keep my comments very short. I will ditto every word that my esteemed colleague, Director Hersi had, Vice President Hersi had, and then some. I do want to share with you that Director Rivera Smith asked that I share. The reason she left after the action items is because it's her daughter's birthday. And I think that it illustrates the commitment that this board takes at the expense of their families as well as staff. So, enjoy your birthday, Liza's da-, Lisa's daughter, excuse me, the L's again. I was serious when I suggested that the Seattle Public Schools explore litigation against the state. I know that sounds radical and probably a little scary, given the fact that the McClary children graduated from high school before we got a ruling from the Supreme Court. But our tax structure and our aim for education being, quote, "the state's paramount duty", and then being constricted with respect to our Special Ed Service funding, which is a federal, a state, and most importantly, a moral mandate that has never been funded appropriately, nor has McClary, nor has the prototypical model. And the transportation budget and the STAR's algorithm that we heard about last night, and that is uploaded to the school district's website, is phenomenally unfair. And yes, we are, in fact, the largest school district in the state out of 295 of them. And, and it's got to change, and I don't see that changing without our putting our shoulder to this issue and seeking assistance from the judicial branch. Because with all due respect, and I do have extreme respect for our colleagues in the legislation, legislative and executive branches, it is not working. It's just not working. And we need to recognize that and decide what it is, in fact, we're going to do. I would encourage everyone listening and to tell ten friends to write the governor, write the Superintendent of Public Instruction, and move our teachers up in the vaccination list, especially for those 600 teachers and staff that deal with our students that need intensive assistance, feeding, toileting, et cetera. This is serious business, and there are every bit healthcare workers, boots on the ground, and we cannot afford to lose any of them, and we need to respect that work and give them an opportunity to get those vaccinations and remove one of the impediments of getting our intensive students that need special education services back to work. They have lost an entire year, and it is morally indefensible. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Harris. Director Rankin?
Yeah, I'm going to continue on that theme. If I was going to create a scenario to, you know, mastermind the slow and steady downfall of public education, I think what I would do would be to cut funding, demand more, basic needs be covered by public education, food access, housing, other basic needs, take away resources, put more and more in educators, devalue the teaching profession. I would do that for about 10 or 15 years, and then I would bring in a global pandemic. And then I would say that school is important and everybody needs to get back, and I would propose budget cuts and not advocate for accelerated access to vaccines for educators. That would be, that would be my, that's a pretty sure shot to, you know, picking apart an already fragile structure that a lot of us depend on and, and watching it crumble right in front of us. I, you know, there's, there's so many things that are true at the same time, and you know, yeah, science says that if this and this and this is in place, this can be done safely. You know, that is maybe true with, with full fidelity and with the, with the assumption that students are static little beings that can, that are going to stay six feet apart no matter what. So, I think when people say, you know, the science is clear, this can be done safely, they're picturing probably middle schoolers or high schoolers that are sitting in rows. Younger kids are actually really good at following kind of silly arbitrary directions. That's how they spend a lot of their time when school is in person. Sit here, don't sit there, move here, we're going to walk together. They're pretty good at following instructions, but our youngest learners, preschoolers, kindergartners, they are just getting used to being part of a school system, and the idea that the governor and the state has said that our youngest learners and special education students should be prioritized to go first, with no acknowledgement of how important it is that teachers be able to be in closer proximity to them than with other students. It's, it's tru-, it's, it's truly baffling to me that we can say how important children are and at the same time not value the people that serve them and not give us as a system the resources that we need to actually do that. And in particular, disability is, has been completely invisible in this conversation at the state level, as far as I can tell. As Director Harris mentioned, toileting assistance, feeding, physical therapy, I mean, even with kindergartners, first graders learning to grip a pencil. All kinds of things that, you know, the reason that we as a board prioritized, you know, way back in June, with community, with educators, with, with principals, prioritized early, early learners and special education students is because we understand the different needs that those groups of students have and how important it is for them to be able to, you know, notice if something with, with, is, you know, needs more attention with a child's grip, or maybe they need to be referred for special services. Early intervention is huge, and building early literacy skills, all this stuff, all of these things that we think that for, for some reason, the state thinks we should be able to snap our fingers and just make happen. And I, I'm even more beside myself and, and kind of going off into a tangent than usual, because I'm, I'm so frustrated and upset at the the simultaneous demands to keep everybody safe and comfortable and happy and bring students back into an environment that it we have to be able to protect and prioritize educators that we need to be comfortable and safe and be able to be in close proximity to some of our most vulnerable students in order for them to access education. I can't like, so that my, my, my call, my question, my demand to, to our state lawmakers is to value the educators that we are asking to provide the most critical in-person services. Give us the resources that we need to be able to do that to bring students back, because, you know, all of the questions, really good questions, why are they doing in that state and not here? Well, in that state, they did prioritize educators for vaccines. You know, why can't we do a hybrid model? Well, a lot of our buildings are so over capacity that we cannot fit half the students at a time with the social distancing measures. There's, there's not space. The classrooms are not large enough. We have too many students. And so, at the same time, we are being promised federal money in relief to recover from COVID, and our state legislator, legislators are indicating that that will be, that will supplant funding that should come from the state. So, I'm really, I'm just, I'm going to wrap up. I'm frustrated, I'm sad, I'm angry for special education students and youngest learners more than for anybody else because of what they need from us. And for us to give that, we have to have the support of the state. You know, teachers can't give anymore. We have no other room to give. Parents are, you know, at their limit, and it's not about, it's not even about, you know, getting back to work or getting childcare or whatever. It's about building skills and our obligation to our most vulnerable learners. And we simply cannot do it when all of our options and resources are being cut off at every turn. So, please, to the governor, to state legislators, whatever you can do, we want our children back in classrooms, our teachers want to be back in classrooms with kids. You have to give us the tools and the flexibility that we need in order to do this to meet the needs of our most vulnerable students. Thank you.
Director DeWolfe?
Thank you, President Hampson. I just wanted to raise my hands up once more to our young people and, and just to really hope, hope that the folks listening in our community really understand, and especially our young people and our students understand that the power that they hold, especially when they come together for common goals. And so, just really, really excited again about Policy Number 1250, which is our school, excuse me, School Board Student Member. So, just want to elevate that. Thanks again to the NAACP Youth Council. I've been really grateful in my time here on the School Board as a director that the NAACP Youth Council has allowed me to work with them so, so many times. Particularly over the course of last year, we, we worked on about four or five different projects, and so I just thank them for that opportunity. Also, just want to again say how excited I am to have Dr. again say how excited I am to have Dr. Brent Jones join us as our interim superintendent. Really looking forward to that collaboration and the work ahead. And then finally, just wanted to forecast for folks that on March 15th, we will be having the District Four Director Appointment, and it's a youth-led forum. Currently, we have four remaining candidates. We had one person withdraw on the 22nd. And the forum will be led by and for youth. And so just please visit the website, seattleschools.org, for more information about the candidates and the process, and email us and let us know what you think.
Thank you, Director DeWolfe. Okay, so we're, I'm the last one to go here. And I know folks are probably anxious, folks are anxious to, to be done with the evening. Down to 20-some people. Just thanks to all the staff for the work that you do to put on these meetings, despite what the Seattle Times has to say. I do know that it's a lot of work to, for these meetings, and, and that we try all the time to make them better. And, and certainly appreciate all the staff that, that sticks around and listens and participates and is willing to be part of this process. Thank you, Director DeWolfe, for reminding folks about the Director for Forum coming up on the 15th. And there are some great videos and other things, statements from those candidates are available on the website. So I hope folks will be reviewing those. We still have four very strong candidates, and I'm excited to get to learn and know more about them as we make this consideration. And, and again, that was really pulled off the, the entire process for getting the candidates up onto our, our site, getting their, their resumes and their videos. All that was done by Board Office and Communications and other staff. And we really appreciate it. And we're looking forward to having the opportunity, as I said, to get, to get to know them. There is so much to talk about that I don't think there's, that other directors have addressed in terms of school reopenings. I think probably the best advice that I have is to please tune in tomorrow. We're, we're going all week this week. And we have our work, Board Special, Special Session, specifically on school in-person portion of reopening. So these are revisions to our reopening resolution that occurred in, that we passed in August, which was last updated on December 17th. For anyone who hasn't read those resolutions, I encourage them to. It outlines all the directives that the, that the board has given staff in terms of our structure for either remote or in-person learning for this year. And they're not long documents. You can even skip the whereas's and get straight to the, the, the therefore's and, and get most of what you need. And we will be bringing forward, in addition to the check, the progress report that has to be submitted by March 1st to OSPI, we will be submitting a resolution which provides clarity of that direction for staff in terms of in-person. So encourage folks to tune in for that. I have a community walk in Magnuson Park, socially distanced, tomorrow at 11:00 a.m., a meeting at the community center. I had the opportunity to spend time with Decatur Elementary to talk about the HCC cohort on Monday, and spent the evening with the TOPS K-8 community last night, mostly talking about transportation. And wanted to say thank you again to staff who put together and provided the details on the transportation, prospective cost savings in transportation that would allow us to, to, to have the most minimal impact on students and families, and, and yet prioritize equity, efficiency, and, and fiscal accountability. So that was a really excellent cross-departmental work session. And I, I know that we all appreciated it quite a bit. And I think it leaves us more informed. And then we also have more budget work sessions coming up. I don't have the next date off the, at the top of my head. But for those that might still be listening, please look for those as well. And with that, there be no further business on the agenda. This board meeting stands adjourned at 7:04 p.m. Thank you all so much.